We're gonna, um, sold. Where's that coming from? Uh, sorry, let me just turn down the. This is not my computer. Where's the mute button? There we go. Okay. Forgive me. Um, no, it's not muted. Hello? Where's, how do you, uh? I'm muted, but it's, it's the sound coming out of this that I want to. Why is that not working? Hold on a second here. Okay. Apologies for that. Okay. Hello and welcome to the September 21st, 2023 meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. I'm Noah Levy. Before we begin, as always, I just want to point out that the first two pages of our agenda detail several ways that you can participate remotely in this meeting. The best way, if you wish to participate and you're watching on a computer, is to use the Zoom connection that allows you to follow in real time and participate in real time. You can also, of course, call in by phone. If you are following the feed on the humboldt-ledgestar.com website and planning to participate by phone, just note that that feed on Humboldt-ledgestar runs 30 seconds or a minute behind. So you'll need to call in a little sooner than you might otherwise need to in order to participate. With that said, I would invite you to begin the meeting by, with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Laura, could we please get a roll call of commissioners present?
Commissioner Scabdal.
Here.
Commissioner Levy.
Here.
Commissioner Landry.
Here.
Commissioner Mulder.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
I'm told that Commissioner Mitchell will be coming, but we'll be a bit late, so we can take another roll call when he gets here. That brings us to item C, Agenda Modifications. Director, do we have any modifications to the agenda?
We do not have any modifications to the agenda, but I do want to just take a moment and introduce Thomas Chapin, who's from the county council's office and will be serving as the counsel tonight.
Great. Thank you. I want to note on the matter of the agenda that we have a lot to try to get through. It's, it's not ideal that we have the workshop on the short-term rentals coming after several public hearing items, which are going to attract their own constituents wishing to comment. We thought about changing the order. We decided that would not be fair and not wise. But what I am going to attempt to do is to exercise strict time limits on how long we spend on the items on the first part of the agenda so that we can begin the workshop by 7:30 or so. We would like to have a full two hours to devote to the workshop. I think it deserves that. So I will ask the commissioners to help me in meeting some time limits for the other items before that. Commissioner Mulder.
Does that mean possibly two-minute public comment, like limiting it down to two minutes, or not thought about that yet?
I think for an item that requires a lot of public comment, that would probably be warranted. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. And so with that, we will come to item D, which is Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. We do always make time at the start of each meeting for items, for comment on items that are within the jurisdiction of the Planning Department, but not on the agenda tonight. So if you have such a comment, please approach, and you have three minutes.
Hello? Can you hear me okay? How's that, how's the sound?
Yep.
Okay, good. Dylan Fiero, Myrtle Town, speaking as a private citizen on behalf of myself. I'm here regarding an aspect of the Humboldt County General Plan, Chapter 14, Safety Element. So if you have that available, maybe you could all open your general plan to the sections 39 and 40. 39 is Sustainable Evacuation Routes, and Section 40 is Improving Inadequate Evacuation Routes. In particular, in Section 40, the county shall identify, and I'm part of the county as a private citizen, shall identify areas and populations with inadequate access and evacuation routes. So I have identified some. Number one is in coming into and out of Myrtle Town, the only ingress and egress in Myrtle Town is Myrtle Avenue. It has two vehicle lanes, but appears at one time to have had four lanes owing to the middle lane for merging and the bike lanes, which presumably weren't always there. Myrtle Avenue bottlenecks every weekday at rush hour between 8:00 and 9:00 in the morning and between 5:00 and 5:30. And this could create a Paradise Fire-like catastrophe in the event of an emergency requiring evacuation in which Myrtle Town residents are trying to escape a fire or other disaster under conditions in which the only egress road is bottlenecked. And the potential result could be catastrophic, and you believe you'll have the power and influence that could protect life and limb in such a scenario by thinking now. Note that in the Paradise Fire, there were 85 deaths, and that was in 2018, which involved a death trap of bottlenecked traffic on a two-lane road that had recently undergone a "road diet," quote-unquote "road diet," from four lanes to the Agenda 21 program in that town. I have a copy of an LA Times article from 2018 about that fire and the tie-in to road diets, and I can give copies to you, however, that's, if you want me to do that. In adequacy, how much time do I have here?
30 seconds left.
Okay. In adequacy to the streets in the county's jurisdiction, and of course, outside the jurisdiction, all appear to be on the same track for a similar road diet with no genuine decision-making input by the people of California. I noticed there were a recent series of community meetings in Eureka and Arcata, build as walk audits, but it seemed like the decision whether road diets were going to happen was long since been made. So I'd like you to take the time to maybe think about this and cease and desist the policy of getting rid of our, of our roads and building traffic hazards.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Sorry to have to cut you off, but we have a very full agenda. Was there anyone else wishing to comment on a matter not on our agenda?
My name is Mark Hilofsky. In 2003, tired of the hustle and noise of the city, my partner and I moved from San Francisco to Edersburg, looking for peace and quiet on the Matol River. Everything was great until November 2020, when my neighbor directly across the river started building a 12,000-square-foot AgriTech greenhouse 100 feet from the water's edge and 800 feet from our home. Project PLU 11295CUP. Despite having our mailing address, email, telephone, and a guarantee from the planner on the project, we'd never received notice of this project coming before the Planning Commission. We even submitted our concerns to the Planning Department, historic aerial photos, and none were ever included in the staff report. The greenhouse is built on landfill that was part of the river prior to 83. The area flooded February 28th, 2007, when NOAA reported a 24-hour rainfall total of 8.4 inches in the White Thorne area. This wasn't even close to the 64 flood level. The greenhouse is built on the gravel bar of the river, and after this flood, there were sinkholes two feet deep. We expressed our concerns to the Planning Department, and were told we only go by FEMA maps, and this area is out of the flood plain, while the area 150 feet higher on the other side of the river is in the flood plain. This greenhouse is only 100 feet from the river's edge, and according to water quality, is required to be 150 feet from the river. This greenhouse is directly across from an old-growth redwood grove. The noise from the greenhouse sometimes reaches 57 decibels in the grove and can be heard inside our home. No concern was taken for the fact that this is one of the largest groves on the central part of the Matol, and no concern for our quality of life, having to listen to an industrial pot farm at our home. We are zoned for one residential unit on a 75-acre parcel, and this farm is on 20 acres with over 16 buildings and multiple living units, and even more on the way. I'm very disappointed in that the Planning Department is giving a higher priority to the establishment of these farms than the quality of life of their neighbors and residents of the community. This owner of this project lives in Oakland. We live here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, before this speaker starts, evidently it's not possible to hear the speaker in the back of the room, so I don't know if we can increase the volume on that, or...
On the mic? Do I have some ability to control that? I've got the on-off switch. It is on. The air conditioning is kind of loud. I don't know if there's some way we could turn that off that might help? That seems better. Thank you, and, and just try to speak up if you can.
My name is Rod Silva, and I wish to comment on a project you approved, PLU 11832CUP. And this is along the Matol River. I live there on Council Madrone Road, and on January 13th of this year, a 150-foot section of the road was pushed into the river by the hillside above it, which has a cannabis farm directly above it. This was caused by drainage from the farm. It did not go down the intended path that the Timberland Resources predicted. Instead, it came down the hill, fed into deep cracks in the hillside, and just pushed the road into the river. Over 2,000 cubic yards of soil fell into the river. I reported this to Mr. Mulder. He came out and looked at it. I gave the information to my supervisor, and I contacted three members of the Planning Department. They attributed it to the river washout. We had a very low rainfall this past year. You can see in the photograph massive trees that slid from the top of the hill down to the road. And this is caused by erosion from drainage from this farm. And I noticed in the documentation for this project, the compliance agreement required an erosion and sedimentation control plan provided by an engineer and a grading permit. The hill is a 22-degree slope. That never happened. And when I pointed that out to a senior planner, he quickly got on the phone with the owner and their agent and decided instead to accept a perk test from 2010 for the house that was built there and a site management plan developed by Timberland Resources, who does not have engineers on staff. So I felt like these people got a shortcut, and now I spend the last six months carrying groceries and fuel across a 150-foot section because I can't get vehicles in. And it's going to happen again next year. The estimated cost to the repair is close to $1 million, and that includes trying to stabilize the hill. The owner of the property refuses to communicate with us. I reached out to the Planning Department. I just wanted help in getting him to direct the water off the slide, but that isn't happening. So I just want you to be aware of what you do and how it affects other people in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mulder, you'd like to...
Just full disclosure, there is a concerned community member that communicated with my wife. My wife gave them my phone number. We had a phone call. And yes, I did see this site in person. Have I said anything other than that? It's, I've seen it in person.
Okay, thanks. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on matters not on the agenda? I'm just switching now to Zoom. I do see a hand up. So I will continue the public comment on non-agenda items with one Zoom hand, which is raised. That's public 7429. Go ahead. You have three minutes. 7429, excuse me. Are you able to unmute?
Hi, good evening. My name is Robi Canorio, and I wasn't planning on...
Sorry, can you just pause, Robi? Is there any way we could make that a little louder? I can barely hear.
Took a while to get in, too.
Okay. Try going ahead now, Robi.
I just am, am calling, wasn't really prepared, but I live across the river from the slide that the last speaker was referring to. I own the property that, you know, intersects in the river there, and it is a very big slide into the river, so I just wanted to confirm the duration. Pretty serious amount of sediment that needs to be addressed. So, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Seeing no other hands, I'm going to close the public comment on non-agenda items and move us to the consent agenda.
Can I ask a question regarding that?
Okay.
Could you be the entity that would come out for a slide and make an assessment and possibly find the issue?
I believe that we have had engineers go out and look at that. I can...
No.
I can come back with a report to discuss exactly what's going on.
Is it the county's responsibility, or is it another federal state?
It's private property with a private road.
I'm sorry, we can't have a discussion about it in this forum, but we will look into it. So, thank you. Okay. With that, we're going to come to the consent agenda. I will, as always, review the items on consent. Yes, Commissioner Landry? Oh, yeah. Thank you, thank you. Since Commissioner Mitchell is here, let's just do a quick roll call to confirm his attendance.
Brian Mitchell.
Present.
Is that all we need to do? Okay. Thanks. Okay. So with that, we will go through the consent agenda. If there are items that need to be pulled, we will do so, but I would encourage us to leave them on consent if, if, if the commissioners don't have urgent concerns about them. So the first item of consent is review and approval of the August 17th, 2023 action summary. Anyone wishing to comment or ask questions about that?
Just please reflect my vote as abstain.
Okay. Second item on consent is the VIPA Farmers LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Salmon Creek area. This is simply being continued to October 5th. So is there anyone wishing to comment on the continuance? We'll leave that on consent. Item number three is the Marshall Ranch LLC Agricultural Reserve Zone Reclassification Notice of Merger and Land Conservation Contract in the Breslin area. Anyone wishing to pull that for questions or... Okay. Quick question. I guess we will pull that and come back to that. Item four is the Ramage or Ramedge Parcel Map Subdivision and Coastal Development Permit in West Haven. Anyone wishing to pull that for discussion or questions? And the last item on consent is the Thomas Morgan Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the Bridgeville area. Anyone wishing to pull that for discussion? Okay. Then we can, then I would entertain a motion on items one, two, four, and five on the consent.
Mr. Chairman, I move items one, two, four, and five on the consent agenda.
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Commissioner Scabdal is the second, and Commissioner Mitchell is the, made the motion. With that, could we have a voice vote to approve the consent agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I don't think we normally do that on consent. Yeah, okay. All in favor say aye. Did everybody say? Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay. Well, as I said, I'd really like us to get through the public hearings by 7:30 so that we can have a full two hours for the workshop. That's what we agreed. So we're going to see if we can move through these expeditiously. The first item on public hearing, item F1, is Big River Farm LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the Edersburg area. And I would invite a staff report.
If you could share my screen, Laura, thanks.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Everybody can hear me okay? My name is Devin Sutphen. I'm an associate planner presenting for the department this evening. So for your consideration this evening is the Big River Farm LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit. First, we're going to cover mapping and the project location. We're going to cover some project deal details, including the proximity to public lands. And then last, we're going to cover public comments. So the project is located just directly north of Shelter Cove and due west of Redway, and it takes access from Wilder Ridge Road, which takes access from Edersburg Road. Both Wilder Ridge and Edersburg Road have been approved for commercial cannabis use by our Public Works Department. So the operation is for a use permit for 22,000 square feet of pre-existing outdoor, supporting ancillary propagation limited to less than 10% of the cultivation area. And then a special permit is requested for the reduction of a 600-foot setback to public lands. Processing like bucking down flower, drying, and kearing is going to occur onsite in existing garage or a shop with further processing such as trimming or packaging occurring off-site at a licensed facility. PG&E provides grid power for the project. The generator will be limited to emergency power outages only. We'll cover some conditions pertaining generator noise a little bit later in the presentation. Water for irrigation is sourced from a hydrologically disconnected groundwater well with an analysis from a licensed hydroengineer, essentially indicating that it has a very low likelihood of connectivity to surface water, to wetlands, or permitted domestic water sources nearby. Current water storage totals 86,000 gallons, or 86,600 gallons, and that includes a 40,000-gallon metal rainwater catchment tank. The applicant has secured some grant funding to increase that water storage by 50,000 gallons, bringing us to 138,000 gallons at the total build-out. That represents about 63% of the annual budget, which is estimated by the applicant to be about 220,000 gallons. Staff was able to verify these by the Monitoring and Reporting Program forms from between 2018 and 2022, provided by the applicant, and that essentially works out to about 10 gallons per square foot. So this map depicts the public lands. Those two light green shaded parcels are managed and owned by BLM. This project was originally noticed for hearing in April of 2019, and at that point, the applicant decided to pursue the Triple R program due to concerns from CDFW, BLM, and the public. Ultimately, the receiving site was not authorized for receiving any additional cultivation entitlements. And at that point, the applicant was, kind of changed their application and decided to pursue existing cultivation on this site. So we referred the project to BLM, of course, and in May of 2019, their initial response was, was a little cold in terms of, you know, they thought that the cultivation area encroached upon BLM lands. They were also, and that, you know, and those man, lands, just to be clear, are managed for sensitive receptors like northern spotted owl, so they're managed for habitat. And they also responded that they were concerned about the mixed-light proposal, that, that lights would have a negative impact on those sensitive receptors. And so the applicant has amended the application to solely outdoor. We actually conducted a site visit this year with CDFW in May, and we had some additional engagement with BLM staff. The applicant further amended their project and decided to relocate the two southernmost greenhouses, which you can see at least one of them in this image. And you can see the graded area kind of encroaches beyond that southern parcel line onto the BLM lands. So they're going to relocate two greenhouses and a soil management area. They're actually going to stock that area, and I've got another image a little further later in the presentation that will show what they're going to stock with about an acre of either tan oak or dug fir. And that's intended to increase that buffer to the BLM lands from about 100 to 150 feet to over 300 feet. The project conditions, and so just to be clear, CDFW and BLM staff both reviewed the stocking criteria and agreed with the foresters' recommendations on those to increase that buffer. Project conditions require staff verification of light shielding before the use of ancillary lighting in the nursery, or of lighting in the ancillary nursery, sorry, and the same for generator noise. The emergency backup generator is not allowed until staff can verify it operates at 50 decibels at 100 feet or the nearest forested edge, whichever is closer. So here's that image that I referenced about the stocking area. So the purple or lavender that's surrounding that one big greenhouse will be relocated to a pre-existing area. No more, or no timber conversion will occur in order to relocate that greenhouse. And just of note, this area is not, was not historically, or at least in contemporary history, stocked with any sort of timber. It was a meadow as far back as 2005 National Agriculture Imagery Program overhead imagery. And then further conditions that we've added require the development, which include the relocation and the reconstruction of those greenhouses to avoid the nesting bird season, or to have a qualified biologist assess the site no sooner than three days prior to that construction, to that activity happening. If there are nests found, and if no nests are found, construction can commence. And if nests are found, then the applicant's going to be required to contact CDFW within 24 hours to determine the appropriate buffer for construction activities. So last, we're going to cover public comment. Again, we mentioned this project was previously noted in April of 2019, and it was noticed again for hearing late 2021, and so both of those notices garnered some public comment. You know, and again, we rehashed that ultimately the receiving site was what was not... You know, and again, we rehashed that ultimately the receiving site was what was not authorized for receiving additional cultivation entitlements. That was one of the main reasons that the applicant chose to pursue this onsite. So what we did is we summarized the, the concerns regarding, basically regarding unlawful cultivation activity, some gunfire that was either on or near the subject parcel or the driveway in November of 2018, and then concerns about sediment delivery to the Bear Creek watershed. So we're gonna kind of cover those like one by one, and how we worked through those. Ultimately, staff was not really able to, to verify the concerns, and, and were not completely convinced that the voiced concerns directly relate to approving a land use permit on this site or to this applicant. So first, we, we had some communications with the sheriff's department. They were unable to confirm the subject property was directly related to this gunfight or gunfire. They weren't able to specifically confirm any illegal activity on the subject parcel. The concerns about sediment delivery too, and the water quality of the Bear Creek watershed due to unauthorized development. You know, the Bear Creek itself is about two and a half miles from the project site. We've got Jewett Creek is a tributary to it. It's about a half mile southeast from the project site. And although in 2015, there was some reorganization of the site, including about 5,000 cubic feet of fill and straw was spread to prevent erosion, along that southern parcel line that we looked at earlier, encroaching upon BLM land. So project conditions are gonna directly address these concerns, essentially. We've got requirement to have them get after-the-fact grading permits for all the graded flats. Next, we've got the stocking that we discussed of about an acre. It's gonna increase that buffer between the cultivation area and BLM lands, also increasing that buffer to Jewett Creek. And then lastly, they're, they're proposing, as we discussed before, the relocation of that last greenhouse that's still there, and a soil management area near that southern parcel line. And then lastly, the gunfire in November of 2018, it appears to be an isolated incident. Staff hasn't been able to conclude that this is typical of the way that the project is But the commission should consider the comments and decide whether the project is likely to be detrimental to the public's health, safety, and welfare. So that does actually conclude the presentation. I mean, we ask that you find the project consistent with the MND for the CMMLUO. Make all the required findings for approving the use permit and the special permit, and adopt the resolution approving the use permit and the special permit, subject to the conditions of approval. So we're, we're available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sutphen. Commissioner Mitchell has a question.
So your bullet point that said illegal activity slash gunfight, what sort of evidence was presented to you to have you add that as a bullet point?
So we added that as a bullet point as a direct response to the two sets of public comments that we received when we originally noticed the project in April of 2019 and then late 2021. Both sets of comments referred to this gunfight and, and actually kind of started to expand into some other things that we were having difficulty connecting to the operation or issuance of a land use permit or processing of an application. We did our best to reach out to the sheriff and, and unfortunately weren't able to confirm. I, I don't believe that there's a police report for that, or at least not one that we were made aware of. So that, that was the reasoning behind us adding that as a bullet point, was just directly addressing the public comments. Thank you.
Commissioner West.
And there were no public comments received for this notice of hearing, correct?
We had some discourse with some of the same commenters, but essentially, we didn't receive any new information or any formal comments. I, we'll, we'll leave it at that for now.
Okay. Commissioner West.
Can you talk a little bit more about the grading that is going on at the site that they need after the vet permits for?
Sure, this, well, well, actually, if I can, I can go back to this image. And if, Laura, maybe you can get that PowerPoint back on the screen. We'll, so the grading essentially is, is the area that is marked in, in purple. Essentially, that used to be a wide-open meadow. And so when they built the second greenhouse, so the one greenhouse that's there, there was another one a little bit to the west of that one. So there was a second greenhouse. There's another flat that you can kind of make out in that image there. Essentially, we had a Colstead land survey and go out and do a boundary survey in 2015. I don't, I, I take that back. We didn't have them do that. The applicant produced that information. And so that surveyor actually made some comments about what they found. And so that was the detail that I put in the presentation about, about 5,000 cubic yards of fill. And, and obviously, at that point, what the surveyor had observed was they were, you know, attempting to minimize erosion by spreading straw. But our understanding is that's kind of the limitation of, of the, well, to back up a little bit, basically, all the graded flats where we're gonna permit an ag exempt greenhouse or issue a building permit for those, we'll, we'll generally need to have an understanding of how the land underneath it is stable. And so that's handled all through the building permit process.
Commissioner Mulder.
So mine's just ex parte about this specific project. I've been contacted by a handful of concerned community, community members, and I forgot to disclose that at the beginning, but because we haven't opened the hearing for public comment, I think it's the appropriate time now. I didn't want to interrupt in the middle of this presentation.
Sure, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Sutphen before we do open up public comment?
So in addition to the grading that happened without benefit of permit and any potential gunplay, are there any other known or alleged illegal activity or failure to follow the standard process that we would expect applicants to go through, excepting, of course, that existing cultivation? We understand that, we don't need to list that, so.
So through the chair, I, just to, to be clear, I spent the first four years of, of my term here as a planner inspecting cannabis farms, usually in the post-approval capacity, but a lot in the pre-approval capacity as well. The, the grading or the reconfiguration of the site is not something that's uncommon. A lot of the times when we approach these projects, our understanding is that if we're able to approve the permit, if it meets all the, the required findings, that this is a good path to reconcile all of that, make sure that it gets the scrutiny that it needs and receives the permits that it needs. In, in terms of other illegal activity, you know, it was difficult for us to kind of parse out some of the things that didn't seem to pertain directly to the project. So we got a comment as a result from this to kind of answer Commissioner West's question that was basically indicating they were trimming illegally, you know, and, and to address that concern directly, trimming would theoretically be allowed under an interim permit. It allows the continued operation of the site until we issue the land use permit. And so what may be perceived as sometimes by the public is illegal trimming activity, for example, would theoretically be allowed under the interim permit. And again, issuing this permit would provide a very specific and direct pathway for them to get the correct building permits to process onsite, which they're gonna just dry and cure onsite. So through the permitting process, we've addressed, we feel we've addressed those, those issues or concerns.
Director, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, thanks. Mr. Sutphen, can you just give a yes or no answer to whether or not there was any other illegal activity on the site, or any other violations of the code that have been identified?
That feels like such a loaded question to answer yes or no to, but, okay.
It's not.
Uh, no, not to my knowledge, no, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Well, we'll bring it back to the commission after public comment, but I do wanna now open public comment. And as always, I first would invite the applicant or the applicant's agent to come up if they are present. They can make a presentation of, normally it's 15, but I'm, I'm gonna be curtailing everybody's time tonight. So in this case, I'm gonna ask you to keep your presentation to 10 minutes.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Stephen Liu. I am the agent for the applicant. The applicant himself is not here this evening, but he had made some travel plans based on a, a, a date that was set in August, but it got moved to this date. But his son and business manager, or who is the business manager, is here to answer any questions or make any decisions on behalf of the business and the family. I don't have anything, you know, too formal to present. You know, I think you may be hearing some serious allegations, you know, that, as part of the public comment, because those, some of those parties reached out to me as the agent with some allegations about the, the, but I just wanted to note that, you know, he's been operating under an interim permit. As part of that, as part of state licensing, the permatee goes through background checks. Those background checks are distributed through California Department of Justice, as well as the Federal Bureau of Investigation. And so they're, the family's here just to operate a legal business and to follow all the laws and regulations that are required of them to, to operate and stay in business. And I'm available to, to answer any further questions if there's anything specific with respect to how the, the site is going to be operated, or how the business will be operated.
Are there any questions from the commission from Mr. Liu at this time?
So are you or the, the son of the applicant able to speak to the letter that we received from Rod Silva alleging that in 2018, after the subject parcel was raided and 16,000 pounds of processed marijuana were seized and arrests were made, that there was a gunfight that took place days after that raid?
This site was not subject to, to that raid or that action. So that's, that, that wasn't this property. I mean, I think if you read more into it, even, I think there, there was an article provided that I saw in the staff report that was referenced. And if you actually read into, into that report, I believe it referenced like an 18-acre parcel, and that's this parcel as part of that report. It's clearly not an 18-acre parcel. That article brought up some serious allegations to the, you know, the, the manager of this business, or the applicant. And it's been four years, and he's never been subject to an arrest. He's never been subject to any allegations, any indictment. He's not involved. Again, I'm hoping that we're here to, to make this, a decision this evening on, on sort of the facts of the matter. And, you know, an allegation is an allegation. You can publish what you want in an article. But I would imagine that after four years, that if there was, you know, a, a pretty serious raid, that law enforcement or responsible parties would have completed their, you know, their investigation by now. But like I said, the, you know, the operator has maintained a, a state license we've provided as part of the record, as requested, metric records for all the sales, the legal sales that are being conducted through this business. So there, I understand too, the gravity of these allegations and the concerns that the public and the commission may have. And that's part of the reason that, you know, the family chose to enter through this process, is to become a legal business, to conduct business and to, to operate within the confines of the law. And I would note that if it's a concern of, of this, you know, potential risk for robbery and impacts on the surrounding neighborhood, you know, the business is banked now. I mean, that is a path forward now for legal cultivators, is you can have a bank account associated with your business. And so if it would satisfy the planning commission, we can, as part of a condition of approval or follow-up, we can provide banking records or, or, you know, and evidence that the business conducts their transactions through a bank, instead of having cash on the property to make it less of a risk. But I don't know what more the, the applicant can offer, because he's never been questioned, he's never been interviewed or, you know, brought in by law enforcement for any of the allegations at hand. And like I said, he's operated under a state license since expiration, until the expiration of the, the state, or expiration of the interim permit at the end of last year, so.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will open up public comments more generally, beginning with, oh, well, okay, did, did the applicant, there's still some time left. Did the applicant's son want to add any initial comments? No. Okay. If we have questions, or even if we don't, you, you're entitled to three minutes after other public comments to respond to or rebut anything that you may have heard. With that, I will then open it up to general public comment, beginning with people in the room. I'd ask you to limit your comments to two minutes, if you can. We have a great deal to get through tonight, and I'm trying to be fair to everybody who's hoping to have some time. Are there individuals wishing, wishing to comment?
Hi, my name's Mark Hilovski, again. I own the property 9351 Wilder Ridge Road, next door to 9320 Wilder Ridge Road. It has been rented out to an elderly couple and their mentally handicapped son since 2018. We have a spring providing water to the house located on the north side of Wilder Ridge Road. In the past 20 years, the spring has been very reliable until the neighbors of 9320 started growing wheat. 2018 was the first year we had nothing but a drip. The tenants use very little water for the house and the small vegetable garden. The elevation of the spring is at 1,530 feet. That does not leave the property and is not required to be registered, according to Fish and Wildlife. It is the only water source on the property. I feel the spring and the applicant's well are hydrologically connected, considering the elevation and proximity to the pot farm. If the spring dries up, I will not be able to afford to drill a well, as the applicant has done for his farm. This project was Triple R'd in 2019 to Honeydew due to public safety issues. There were too many guns, and as a result, there was a gunfight at the driveway entrance to the property 9320. The elderly couple and their son witnessed the fight from their house, which is in direct view of the neighbor's driveway at Wilder Ridge Road. It was very frightening, terrifying for them witnessing this gun violence. The property asking to get permitted is owned by Ivan Ilyev. If you read the article in the North Coast Journal, which I gave you April 25th, 2019, you will see that there are three men arrested in Arcato Airport after Ivan. From the article, Hansel declined to comment on whether he was on the plane as part of the investigation or just happened to be traveling, saying he can't speak publicly about the FBI's case generally, though he said his department is well aware of an organized crime element operating within Humboldt County's illicit cannabis industry, unquote.
Okay. I'm sorry. The rest of it to him, right there.
During a meeting of the supervisors to reconsider the Triple R proposal, they denied it, based on the neighbor's concerns. And they were trying to Triple R five permits to the same parcel. Nobody wanted that. One lady commented, she goes, "He's a big player, there's a lot of cash, and with cash comes guns." And that's what happened at our place. They were after cash. Three cars were blocking the driveway, and two were on the other side of the road. They're firing at each other. In a recent conversation with the FBI, and they did contact us back then, and asked us to come into their office in Fortuna, he was under investigation. And as far as I know, he still is, according to them. They didn't deny that he was no longer under investigation. So I don't know why they offered to Triple R the project in the beginning, because they probably knew there was concern about the applicant. And there still is. We don't want him there. The people who are renting it would like to have complete use of the property. They want to step outside the front door and not have to worry about the possibility of getting shot. Or like a child going to school, "Am I gonna come home today or not?" It's, that's what it is. There's no need to have that many guns. There's no need to have that many guns with all that up there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there other individuals in the chambers wishing to comment on this project? If not, I see one hand on Zoom. I believe that would be Robi Tenorio. Another hand has gone up as well. So yes, I'll go first to Public 7429. If you could please limit your comments to two minutes. Thank you. You're still muted.
Okay, let's give it a try. I'll quick start with the owls. I'm concerned that the northern spotted owl habitat is 100 feet. One of the greenhouses is standing for cannabis half mile away. And the ordinance does say that sound levels have to show that they will not soften the harassment of northern spotted owls. So I'm not sure how 100 feet is not too close. And owls really require meadows in addition to rural forest. So mature forest and meadows are needed for healthy habitat. And planting a buffer is not going to really help. So it doesn't seem like a pro owl mitigation. And to remedy and make BLM less opposed to this project, staff required the applicant to remove a greenhouse that was on BLM land. So the picture, not sure how accurate that is, but maybe you all, as a commission, have informed BLM's approval. BLM is totally adopted this. Also, on the power, excuse me, the summary staff report says that the power is provided by PG&E, but when you look at the conditions, like number 11, it's unclear whether they even know that there's enough PG&E to run the house. And so they are, at this point, I think, relying on generators, because then they also don't have an energy budget now. And that's something that they would be doing in the future, which seems kind of backwards. Trying to rush here. Let's see. So the ordinance does require public safety to be addressed, and that requirement does not seem to be met if you only look at the application in isolation. So we've all been aware out here that both the sheriff and the FBI have been investigating disturbing circumstances.
Robi, I need to ask you to wrap it up, please.
So it says on page six, there's nothing in the applicant's submitted information to indicate that gunfire and illegal activity is part of how they operate the business. Well, that's not enough. There needs to be something more than that. The planning staff I spoke to said...
Thank you. Okay. We have one more hand up on Zoom, that's 7108. You have two minutes when you get started. Still muted.
Hi. First of all, I want to talk about the public process. This is a really big deal to people that live around this farm. And to cut it back to two minutes, it's heated. I think it's really improper. So let me see. I think you should stick to the 600-foot buffer on BLM property. And will there be guns on the property? And did the county get a response from the sheriff? Or just no comment? Because I heard about problems, serious incidents at other sites associated with the applicant. And I think that's a serious issue for the safety and welfare of the public. And staff cannot verify generator noise. I'm just wondering how that happens. And if you're concerned about public safety, if you're concerned about the wildlife, and supposed to be a buffer, supposed to be a 600-foot setback, and then you're going to just plant some trees. And at some point, they'll grow up. But that's not the same at all. So I think you should think seriously about this. And I'm really sorry that you cut people off at two minutes. Thanks.
I apologize for that, Ms. Blackberry. Thank you for keeping it to two minutes. Okay. Seeing no other hands on Zoom, I will just return. If the agent would like to briefly rebut or respond to what you've heard, you can have a couple of minutes to do that.
Thank you, Chair. With respect to the allegations of gunfire, gunfighting, I mean, there's no firearms on the property. I don't believe there's ever been evidence of a police report provided with respect to that incident. The concerns with respect to the generator usage, you know, the project is scaled down now to outdoor cultivation, so there will not be supplemental lighting, the existing. And the reason done for that is just the lack of available power in the region. And so that's part of the reason the project got scaled down to what is available through PG&E there. So furthermore, generator requirements are heavily scrutinized by the state now. So as part of your state license renewal, you're required to actually take a picture of the generator hour meter, and that is an annual requirement. So that is an annual kind of, on top of what the county does as part of the annual inspections, the state is tracking generator usage also. And their concern is primarily greenhouse gas emissions, but it is being tracked. And there is a limit of 80 hours or proof of emergency, you know, and it's basically for emergency use only. And so the state is tracking that as well. With respect to reforesteding it and providing hardwood habitat instead of just an open meadow, that was a mitigation that was requested by both CDFW and BLM. So that was directly coordinated with their staff by the planning department. And, yeah, and, you know, I believe some of the other concerns brought about, energy budget, that is being addressed. And the specific concern about an unregistered spring and water not being available there, again, I encourage all landowners to register their water rights. That is how you protect your water rights, as when a hydrogeologist analyzes well usage, they go off of registered springs and water sources. So again, I encourage them to file that. And so if there's any future concerns, that can be tracked as part of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So just since you're here, and the last time I'll ask it. There's an article passed around with a specific allegation, with specific names, about a specific property, and it's your testimony to us that has nothing to do with this property, this owner, or anyone involved in it. Is that what you're saying?
As far as I'm aware of the circumstances, that, no, it's not, he's not been involved in any of those allegations. I do understand that he was the target of a crime, that that is accurate, according to the reporting. And according to, you know, I followed up on that specific case, those three individuals that were targeting the owner of this operation, that is real. He was a potential victim of a very serious crime. And that was caught and interdicted by law enforcement, for which everyone is very grateful for that. But again, this is all the more reason why he's continued to move forward in this process is to become a legal business. Nobody wants to be the victim of that when this was an all-cash industry. I'm sure many incidences happened. I'm sure many incidences led to far more serious consequences for the victims of those crimes. And so, you know, I'm sure the family's very grateful for the opportunity to enter through this legal process, to become a legal business. I will note that he's never, the applicant has never been, again, interviewed or arrested, or there's been, you know, with respect to the other allegations in the article of legal activity, he's not involved with any of that, and there has been no follow-up. I read the article. The statement provided by the individual that was cited was that he believed it was the applicant here. But again, I would have to imagine that in the past four years, including, and I believe the perpetrators of the crime that were in that article were sentenced last, in 2021 and 2022, in the follow-up. That if there was any sort of follow-up on that illegal activity, that he would have, you know, there would have been consequences by now. And I want to state that the applicant has been fully transparent, you know, since he's been the same applicant since 2019. He's not sold the property. He has not, you know, tried to hide from law enforcement. He's, you know, when you get a state license, you're on a public database, you go through background checks. I don't know, I understand the concern. It's a very serious allegations that have been presented, you know, as part of this process. But, you know, I don't have any other information. I'm hoping that, you know, that we can make a decision this evening based on sort of facts that are, you know, that can be substantiated and not just allegations. Again, I would, I would hope that, you know, the same issues keep being brought up, but with respect to a gunfight, but, and this has been brought up in 2019 as well and 2021. However, has there been a police report or any other substantive documentation of the matter that can be sort of discussed?
Okay. Thank you. Did you, Commissioner Mulder wanted to follow up with you.
Through the chair. So to approve this project, we have to make a finding. Finding number six. It says, "The cultivation of 22,000 square feet existing outdoor cannabis cultivation and the conditions under which it may be operated or maintained will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity." With the documents that you've provided as the agent of the applicant, do you feel in your best knowledge that that finding could be made?
I do. And I believe that with the mitigations that have been developed as part of, you know, reducing the proposal from mixed light to outdoor, and the negotiation, not negotiations, but the mitigations that are proposed and agreed to between CDFW and BLM, that the project is going to make the surrounding area better.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay. And, okay, we have one more follow-up. Okay, then why don't we let Mr. Liu return? Thank you, and I will close public comments.
Should just really quickly offer the applicant's, not the agent, but the son of the applicant, if he had any words.
Would the applicant's son wish to respond as well as?
I just want to make sure we give everyone due process.
Sure.
Hello, everybody. I just want to say my dad's not a criminal, has had no criminal history. He's always been the first to lend a helping hand to anybody in the community. And I just want to leave it at that. We're here to do good business and do good by Humboldt and the ordinance. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Fair enough. Thank you, Commissioner Mulder. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for discussion.
My question has to do with a triple R property, because I don't know a whole lot about it. But what I do little know is that if it's deemed a triple R property, it's because it's not suitable to grow cannabis.
Can you speak closer to the mic? Thank you.
It's deemed, I thought, to not be suitable to grow cannabis, and so now you're moving to another parcel, and there's some benefits. But in this particular case, the new parcel, the receiving parcel was, fell through. So then they go back to the one that was originally a triple R, which was not suitable for cannabis. And are you, are you saying that they, the changes that they made to just grow outdoor, to maybe set back a little bit, overcame all of the issues that originally made it a triple R property?
We are prepared to make that statement, yes. At that time, they didn't have an analysis for the well, which is what's being required of contemporary projects. And so that's in addition to the consultation we've had with CDFW and BLM staff regarding sensitive habitat and those buffers, the proximity to the cultivation from those. And, you know, again, as Stephen Liu had iterated, they both, we had, BLM staff had biologists and foresters that both agree there was a little bit of back and forth about what type of tree would be replanted in that area. And ultimately, BLM left that up to the applicant. So we do feel that those issues have been addressed. Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to make a comment, I guess maybe with a question to follow. I just want to note that both in the staff report and on the agenda, this comes to us with a somewhat unusual posture. Normally, we get a recommendation to approve a permit. That is the staff recommendation. Of course, we can choose not to. Occasionally, we get a recommendation to deny when it's very clear to staff that the findings that would allow approval can't be made. In this case, it is coming to us not clearly with a recommendation to approve, but with the option to approve or deny. Essentially, the staff seems to be saying, "This is a tough call. The findings can be made either way." Is there, is there anything that either you, Mr. Sutfin, or Director Ford would like to add on that point?
I'll take a shot at that. I think what we've done here is to identify that technically, everything has been done to comply with the ordinance and to address the issues. But we recognize, due to the severity of some of the social concerns that surround the property, that there may be an alternative course of action that the Commission wanted to discuss.
Okay. Thank you. Other thoughts? Commissioner Mulder?
So this is a 90-acre parcel, and we're looking to do 22,000 square feet of outdoor or permit. Why is, why is the, we do setback so necessary on a 90-acre parcel? I'm sure it's your topography and water and all that, but can you just walk us through that?
Yeah, I think one of the things that you want to look at, where you've got an application for pre-existing cultivation. So it's not like we're starting with a blank slate. We're starting with where is the cultivation located? So prior to 2016, there was cultivation in the locations where it's at. Obviously, some of it was too close to BLM. In order to satisfy some of the habitat concerns, that's being relocated. But if you're truly, and I believe this parcel is also fairly heavily forested. So if you wanted to relocate, what you're really talking about is moving off an area that has, as Mr. Sutfin mentioned, traditionally been a meadow, been open, into an area where you're starting to remove timber or convert timberland. That is not allowed under the ordinance.
Thank you. I'll just ask one additional question, if I may. Again, the degree of concern or opposition to this project expressed, at least initially by BLM, was fairly unusual, it seemed to me. They may, they may at times issue sort of blanket recommendations against setbacks, but usually don't go into great detail about specific concerns. In this case, it seemed that, you know, the combination of the proximity to their property, the presence of northern spotted owl, and other ecological or habitat concerns seem to rise to a greater level. What I'm not totally clear about is whether, given the, I understand that the applicant and staff working with the agencies have done quite a bit to attempt to address their concerns and CDFW's concerns. At the end of the day, is BLM still in the posture of opposing this project?
They are not. We had specific interactions. I went on-site with CDFW this year. Then we had a group Zoom meeting with a minimum of three BLM staff and a couple of staff from CDFW. We had a forester and a biologist from BLM. And so the initial responses essentially were rescinded. They amended the project to remove the mixed light. They agreed to move the cultivation to the north within previously deforested areas. And it has been reversed, yes. The BLM... The BLM is very clearly on board with this project as conditioned and as amended.
Thank you.
If, if I could, if it hasn't been said bluntly enough, this is a rather unusual project, and that both CDFW and BLM have worked through the issues on this and are now not in opposition to the project.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Commissioner Mulder?
So through the chair to staff, and I just want to make sure I ask this, clarifying, we've seen a lot of public comment. There's articles, journal, all that kind of stuff. I just want to be clear that our decision-making process up here is regarding land use. Anything that has to do with someone's potential involvement in any organized crime or not, we can't use that as decision, part of our decision-making process. Is that correct or incorrect?
This is a land use decision. It is based upon compliance with the ordinance. As you referenced earlier in one of your questions, one of the decisions that the planning commission needs to, one of the findings the planning commission needs to make is that it's not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. So that, there is some latitude there to consider other things, but the, the test has to be the factual basis for making that finding, either that it is not detrimental or is detrimental. So that, there's the line. It's what are the facts involved to make the correlation to being detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare?
Okay. Can I ask a follow-up question? And so my understanding is, an allegation is, couldn't be a fact. If there was a charge, that could be considered possibly a fact, but an allegation is, it's a slippery slope is the way I'm reading it, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
It's a very slippery slope to accuse somebody of something in this context where they have not been otherwise accused and convicted.
But that said, if I may, you know, we, we do make decisions sometimes based on testimony of neighbors, of bad behavior, or alleged violations that were not documented, no police reports were filed, you know, sometimes we have to go on the basis of the testimony we hear if it seems credible.
If I may?
Yes, Commissioner Mitchell.
I agree with you. We cannot and should not discriminate against someone for being allegedly involved in a crime, that no proof has been presented and no conviction has been made. That being said, a critical component to ensuring that all of our conditions of approval are met stems upon our ability to trust the applicant to follow through. So for me, I'm looking more at the past violations, both of the grading, stuff going on so close to habitat. Those are the types of things that make me question whether I can make that finding, not simply the allegation.
Thank you for that, because that's the finding I have circled that I'm trying to agree that, make that finding, or, to be honest with you, it's like, can we make that finding, or there's an alternative, which I haven't seen, like, presented, and I'm actually honestly trying to find that and read that one as well. And maybe I didn't do my homework right.
The findings, that would be a basis for denial?
There's an alternative resolution, but I'm trying to find the alternative resolution. I'm sometimes not very good at finding stuff.
If, if I may ask the director, is the burden of proof in terms of whether or not a project is going to be materially injurious to neighbors or have a negative impact on the public health, safety, and welfare, is it up to the applicant to prove that the project won't do those things? Or in absence of evidence that it will, do we have to find that it won't?
I, I don't know that you're compelled that directly to, to make findings. I think you have to follow a path of where the facts lead you. And it's important to be consistent, and one of the things that I just want to bring the commission back to is kind of a center point, that this is a 1.0 application. Originally, part of the intent of 1.0 was to bring people into compliance that were already cultivating. And so the, the violations that we may be identifying here are things that happened when, before cultivation was legalized. And so the grading and all that kind of thing, it was often done without permits. If we were to identify that grading before 2016 on a pre-existing cannabis farm was rational for denial, many cannabis farms would be being denied. And, and so just want to caution the commission to be very consistent in its application of, of how it's viewing violations of, of like the grading ordinance.
So all the violations that we've heard about, none of them happened after 2016?
I'm going, I do not believe they happened after 2016. I'll ask Mr. Devon to, Mr. Sutfin to verify that.
That is our perception through the chair, is that, you know, that Kohlstad Land Survey, for example, from 2015, that talked about the encroachment upon BLM land, I can't recall off the top of my head when in 2015 that was conducted, but pretty clearly indicated that that grading, that we were talking about, the 5,000 cubic yards of fill occurred before that survey was stamped by the, by the surveyor. So to the best of our knowledge, yes. And it is consistent, as Director Ford said, with bringing projects for pre-existing cultivation into compliance.
Yes, Commissioner West.
For me, the fact that the applicant stands before us today and has gone through the time and the work to work with the agencies, work with staff, and come into the process engenders some trust, as we've all been talking about, to, there are plenty of cultivations out there that do not choose to go through this process, and it is time-intensive, it is laborious, it's costly. So for me, I, it's a big point in their favor that they are trying to come into the legal fold.
Okay. Commissioner Landry?
I would like to second that in a way that I appreciate, that our county staff and BLM and CDFW were working jointly to see that these things are up to what they need to be.
Commissioner Mitchell?
So, I guess, the part of the, the part of the allegation that still sticks with me is, I guess, the quantity of product going through the traditional market, and I know that metric is intended to stop the traditional market from being an outlet from cannabis produced under a license. But I'm curious, to what extent do we look at the, like a summary of the metric data to say, out of this many square feet, they produced approximately one to two pounds per plant, and therefore, we have, you know, this much that was sold on the legal market versus, did they only sell, you know, a few hundred pounds in the legal market, and the rest was spoiled, or?
So part of the struggle with, with the metric system is that it tries to make all plants equal. And you and I and probably everybody else in the room knows they're not. Some plants will produce far more than other plants, and, and so one of the issues that I would offer, or one of the solutions to your question that I would offer, is really what the county is doing is the land use permitting, and then the state is doing the licensing and the tracking. So we're looking to make sure that what's being done as, in terms of an activity on the land, is in compliance with what the county has put in place to protect resources.
And I guess I would pose that if we can be satisfied that there will no longer be any connections with any traditional market players that may have been involved in the past situation, then I feel like I could get to that finding. Is there something that we could come up with, because I personally don't trust the state and metric that they've fully shut off the back door? So is there something we could do that would be somehow within our purview of what we look at, that we could ensure that that's the case?
I, that is not a, that is not a hill we've tried to climb. And I will just say, one of the things that I think the planning commission and the board has done from a very early point in this cannabis journey is to treat people who are coming into the system as honorable and trustworthy, because they have come and made themselves vulnerable to public scrutiny, to the light of, of day. I mean, everybody now knows their address, and, and so that they're, they should be trusted to be telling the truth. Not everybody proves that they can be trusted, but it's, it gets to be a very slippery slope, to use that term again, if we're starting from the premise that people aren't to be trusted.
Well, I definitely don't start with the premise that people can't be trusted. I'm saying, I'm having a hard time with the specific set of circumstances, testimony from neighbors and all of that, in drawing the conclusion that there is sufficient evidence to show that it will not have that impact. And so I am asking, in exchange for the subjective decision that we're making, that it's in the public's best interest to reduce this setback and to allow this to go forward, that what may not be something we have to worry about is something that I could be comfortable with, and that's a package I'd be comfortable supporting. So would you perhaps have some ideas for how my concerns could be addressed without being too much of a micromanaging body?
So even using, using the word metric, I'd be walking on a slippery slope there because I just read an article today by Nicole Elliott that the state looks to be getting ready to dump metric. So, and I would, I'm, I'm not going to really go down the rabbit hole, although, I'm just going to say I read a story today that leads you to believe that the state may be looking at not using metric anymore, possibly, and looking at different ways of doing track and trace. That doesn't mean that they're going to do it or not going to do it. I am not so concerned about looking at metric data and stuff like that. I was appreciative that they supplied that. It would, for me, it's more that finding number six, what, you know, regardless if it's traditional or regulated, what's going to ensure that the neighbors aren't going to have to deal with any negative effects if this project was approved? And that's kind of, you know, I think where it would be more helpful to look at it. But I have a lot of thoughts, but go ahead.
So with most neighbor impacts, such as noise and smell, I think that there's a give and take, and, and we can allow sometimes bad neighboring to go on and then a complaint process. But if we're talking about, again, allegedly, connections with organized crime, you know, it only takes one stray bullet and there's no coming back from that. So I have a suggestion. In the past, where we've identified properties that we do not want processing to happen, we added a condition that said part of the annual inspection is to look at receipts that show that they paid to have their pounds processed at another facility. And so I would offer something such as, we, as part of the annual inspection, we look at the total number of sales plus what's on hand to make sure that there isn't hundreds or thousands of pounds unaccounted for.
So just to go back, I mean, you have weather can affect it, different cultivars that can affect yields. I, I would be very, very apprehensive to get down that rabbit hole. As far as looking at, like, hey, show us receipts that you've sent off to processing or something like that, I could see that. But as far as us thinking we're mathematician whizzes that know exactly how much yield per square foot?
Yeah.
I'd be scared of that because, I mean, you could stick different cultivars in the same square footage and get different yields.
I'm suggesting a range.
Chair, if I could offer? I, I hate to do this, and I know that you're trying to solve a, a problem here, but we're way, way, way outside of anything the county regulates at this point. And, and so I would just perhaps offer that perhaps you could do kind of a survey or a consensus and see where commissioners are at.
That's what I was just about to do. I mean, I, we, we're also way beyond the time that I was hoping we could cover this item in with a lot left to get to. Do people feel ready to make a decision one way or the other? Some of you have not really commented. Are there more things you need to discuss or learn from staff? Then, I mean, I would entertain a motion one way or the other. We have two potential motions prepared, one to approve, one to deny.
My only hangup is that finding number six, and then Commissioner Mitchell just used the term of a stray bullet, it just takes one stray bullet, and then I'm like, oh, God, now I got to get back to this. So I don't, I don't honestly know, but I.
Mike, I want to comment to that. I mean, the, the, my understanding of the purpose of coming into compliance and going through this process is to improve the health and safety of the industry. And the actions that took place in the past were in an unregulated industry and world. So, you know, you can, you can have crime anywhere, but, you know, my belief is that by bringing these businesses into compliance, we're addressing the environmental issues, we're improving the environment, we're addressing the safety issues, we're improving the safety overall. And in this situation, it's not clear to me, you know, if we're just dealing with an applicant that was a victim of a crime. And I also struggle with punishing people that have been victims of crimes. So that's the other side of it.
I think my last comment for the night is that I agree with most of what you're saying. If we were assured that they would come into compliance with all of it, that would be wonderful. I personally know that a number of applicants have found it uneconomical to sell through the legal market. So they go through this process so that they don't have cops sniffing around, and they're, they're good, but every year, man, we had mold and drips and just didn't sell anything. So that's what I would be trying to strengthen if I had the power to tweak this. And absent something in this particular case, I'm unable to support finding numbers or make finding number six. I would be willing to give staff and the applicant more time to pull together more of it. I would be willing to give staff and applicant more time to pull together more evidence to make finding number six, but I can't make it. So I would be willing to vote to deny it or give more time.
That's frankly where I am as well. Commissioner Mulder.
I just want to, through the chair, ask a couple of questions to staff. So clarifying, has there been any other complaints other than this, the 2018 incident of gunfire taking place that could be detrimental to neighboring properties?
Through the chair, the comments we received regarding those seem to be repeated each time we noticed the project for hearing, including the most recent, in which I had phone conversations with the commenters and, and had some kind of an assurance that they were going to provide some sort of public comment and they're, they're here today. So the, the complaints have kind of seemed to be fairly consistent and haven't encompassed anything new in terms of, of that.
If I'm not mistaken though, I believe those complaints cited later incidents of hearing gunfire, maybe not witnessing a gunfight, but hearing gunshots. So I, you know, that, that was what I took from the public comment that I read.
And I'm just going to say, as a owner of rural country property, hearing gunfire is not unusual.
True. True. Director Ford.
Thanks. I just want to make sure that Mr. Suffin clarified something in what you said, that was that it's the same complaint about the same incident, it's not continuing on.
So I agree with the Chair Levy that, you know, there were verbal reports of additional gunfire, but to kind of back up with Mr. Scavdal was saying, there really was no substantive detail. We, we asked about whether or not there was a sheriff's report. The response we got was the sheriff won't respond, quite frankly. And there should theoretically be a record of 911 calls, for example. That's not something that we looked into, into this, but we did contact the sheriff recently and weren't able to get any different response than, than the previous response we'd already received from them.
Okay, thank you.
I have to make, so I'm a little confused and the, and I want to make sure, I think the director kind of clearly asked the question I was looking for. So what I'm trying to get to finding number six, was that an isolated incident in 2018 or have, has the county received additional reports of gunfire since, since then?
So through the chair, to be clear, we got a report from the public about a gunfight that may have happened either on the subject parcel or at the driveway of the subject parcel in November of 2018. The subsequent discussions and reports that we've gotten about gunfire have been very general and not as specific as happening either on the property or at the subject driveway. And again, with the comment I just made about, you know, contacting the sheriff's department again and not getting able, not receiving. Yes, there were gun, gun activity did have, did take place more than once, at least in the allegations that we received.
Thank you.
So with hearing that, can I make a motion to continue this to a date uncertain? I'm, I'm just, or I mean, there might, there might be four votes. I just, that goes into finding number six. So I'm kind of like, I would like to hone in on that a little bit more.
You can make whatever motion you like, but would you clarify what you, oh, okay. Commissioner West.
I think no, Commissioner Levy is getting there, clarifying what, what information you want.
Right.
That would benefit us continuing.
Is anyone ready to move this forward, one way or the other? Because I would love us to be able to bring it to some resolution and have time for the other items on our agenda.
I will move that we deny the project based on our inability to make finding number six.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Well, okay.
You need to have evidence to, to make that statement.
Okay, so you need a greater clarification of?
Yeah, there, I mean, so a finding needs to be made in the affirmative or, or to, or that it's detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare and for reasons.
So my reasons would be the setback. I, we're constantly asked to approve these setbacks, why it's in the regulation and then we just ignore it all the time. And there was also the sedimentation issue. I can't prove one way or another. As far as I'm concerned, a lot of people that engaged in cannabis prior to legalization were criminals because they were breaking the law. So that's not an issue to me. The issue is environmental. There was also discussion about the spotted owl being in close proximity. There was just a number of things that I listened to that made me want to not approve it.
Could, could I ask, based upon that, that's really not related to the public health, safety and welfare finding, but it is certainly a finding.
Well, then we can add that one. That was my decision.
Understood. So if you want to continue to articulate those, I would ask that you make a motion of intent to deny, give staff direction to prepare the resolution, addressing the reasons for denial and we'll bring it back. It can be on consent calendar to just affirm that we have heard you correctly.
So the wording in alternative to B, that we find that the project has the potential to have a detrimental effect on the public health, safety and welfare in conflict with the general plan and zoning ordinance, that's where I'm coming from to make that. Not, and that's why I asked about, do we have to prove that it will or do they have to prove that it won't? And right now I can't make the finding because there's insufficient evidence to substantiate that it will not. So I like the wording in B and I also agree with Commissioner O'Neill about the proximity to the sensitive receptors.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. I think we've clarified that motion. We have the opportunity to comment on the motion. Commissioner Mulder. Well, I'm about at the point to call for a vote, so that's why.
Can we do a roll call on this one?
Yeah, yeah, we will. So I just wanted to give, but before we do a roll call, I wanted to have, everybody have a chance to have their last say.
I'm like, as far as, I would hate for us to choose the setback one for, for me personally because I feel that we've granted setbacks in lots, lots of other instances. And the reason I'm hesitant in including that at this moment is because I heard that BLM and DFW was okay with the setback reductions and they did not testify in the hearing tonight, but I did hear that, so I'd be a little uncomfortable maybe using that. You know, as I stated before, it's fine to be on whether, what, whatever end of a vote. And I still don't even know which way I'm going to vote yet.
So if, assuming that there's sufficient votes to pass this, if it has to be more narrow to get your support, I would be willing to do that, but I'd like to see where we stand with it as it is, if that's all right.
Totally fine with that.
You're asking for a straw, a straw vote?
Well, I guess meaning, if you agree with the outcome, but not necessarily each finding, in the past, we've had disagreements perhaps on, you know.
Could I just cut this short? I'm sorry, Chair. If, if you're willing to amend your motion to not include that and the second is willing to accept that, you can go to the vote.
Right. Make the motion the intent to deny.
Right. Or no, no, you've made the motion to deny, it's been seconded by Commissioner O'Neill. Commissioner O'Neill said part of the rationale were relative to setbacks, sedimentation, NSO proximity. And, and so I think the question is, is will you take out setbacks as part of those findings and as part of the motion?
And we're okay with NSO and sediment, but not setback? Commissioner Mulder?
You can, it's, the setback one was the one that was hanging for me because I felt it was fairly.
I mean, we can eliminate, it's like eliminated my mind because I haven't agreed with all the other ones either.
The friendly amendment is accepted by the maker.
Okay, thank you. Just to be clear, it is a motion to deny?
It's a motion to deny based upon inability to make the findings that it would not be detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare and it's related to the recommendation in B with the additional references to concern about sedimentation and NSO habitat.
But you will bring back a resolution affecting that?
No, we're, we're just going to write it up based upon what you're telling us tonight.
You have what you need. Thank you.
And do we need to make any additional findings or whereas's so that we're not overturned on a technicality?
It's always better to spend a little more time on findings.
So can we just ask you to bring back a bulletproof resolution if this passes on consent next time?
That would change, be changing the motion to be a motion of intent to deny.
I think we need to.
Mr. Chair, there, there was something that, that staff had said in the, in their last few comments and that was that they reached out to the sheriff's office and the sheriff would not deny. Now that made me very curious to what may be a comment coming from the sheriff's office, clarifying we can't for whatever reason or that they actually have a response. So that last point and that last sharing has me in a, a space of, okay, well, I want to know what that is so that I'm comfortable with my findings and my vote.
So are you suggesting that you would like to continue and get further information?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but we do have a motion already on the table.
Call for the question.
Okay, I, I now call for a roll call vote on the motion to deny.
Commissioner West?
No.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder?
I'm going to go yes.
Commissioner Landry?
No.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Scavdal?
No.
Okay, the motion passes four to three. This was a tough one. I appreciate everybody's thoughtful deliberation. And with that, although we still have a lot more to get to, I am going to call for a 10-minute recess. It's that time. Let's, let's get ready to start promptly in 10 minutes. Thank you. Thanks everyone for your patience tonight. We are doing our best to move through a very heavy agenda. We have two more public hearing items as well as one pulled item from consent that I think will be a very quick thing to resolve. So let's move to item two of the public hearing, which is the Fennel Parcel Map subdivision and coastal development permit in the Manila area. Do we have a, Mr. Lazar, is that your presentation? Great, then, then I would invite your presentation, please.
Laura, if you could bring up my screen. I'm going to go quick. I think you'll be okay with that. This is a parcel map subdivision and a coastal development permit. It is for a project located in the Manila area. It's a project that, a parcel that has existing residential development, two residences on the property. This is a subdivision to divide each residence onto its own separate parcel. In this slide, you can see its relative position, Peninsula Drive, where it intersects with Highway 255, New Navy Base Road, and also at the other end where Pacific Avenue intersects with Peninsula. The project's in white. The zoning of the property is residential, single family, and the general plan is residential low density. As I mentioned, there will be no additional density because the parcel is already developed with two units and I'll get into why in a moment. This is a copy of the tentative map. Here's a copy of the satellite image showing the parcel with the two residences. The white line is showing essentially the location where the division will occur between, should it be approved tonight. There, this is one of the homes. This is on the north side of the property. Here's the home on the south side. Each of these would be on its own individual parcel. This is showing the location of existing sewer and water lines that serve both units or both residences, so they both have their own sewer and water connections at this time, so that won't be necessary as part of the subdivision improvements. Here you can see the access roads that serve the property. It's bound on the north and south sides by two private roads and Peninsula Drive along the western frontage. The paved portion of Peninsula Drive, I need to correct in accuracy in the staff report, it was said to be 40 feet. The right of way is 40 feet, the improved surface is 20 to 22 feet. The applicant, the reason why this is not on consent, like another project that was earlier on the agenda, is because the applicant's requesting an exception to certain requirements that have been recommended by the Department of Public Works, with particularly the Peninsula Road frontage improvements. Two of the requirements that the public works is asking for is dealing with paving of the first 50 feet of several access roads that I was just showing. The other requirement is the frontage improvements along Peninsula Drive and that would be the creation of a parking lane through widening and, and surfacing with asphalt the remaining area of the right of way. The applicant's requesting that exception to relieve them from that requirement to pave that portion of the right of way and I have some photographs from earlier this week that I took just to show the commission. So this is a shot showing Taylor Court. This is one of the private roads. This is on the south side of the property. This would be improved to 50 feet coming off of the edge of the right of way. You can see where it needs some work, where it interfaces with the gravel of the existing private road. This is another shot looking up towards Peninsula Drive. This is a shot of the other private access road. This is on the north side and it's serving the other residents. A close-up view and then looking from inside of the property out towards Peninsula, you can see the condition. And much of that's already paved, but it will probably be extended a certain distance as part of that condition. Here are shots of Peninsula Road, or Peninsula Drive. This is looking north from the intersection with Taylor and you can see where the truck is parked is the area which would be paved. Looking a little closer, you can see that the surface of it is unimproved at this time. The fence line probably is in the right of way, but you can imagine that that area as, as part of the public works condition would be paved with asphalt. And I should mention that the reason for that is that it's anticipated that that will continue to be used as parking and as such, not having an improved surface invites or accelerated degradation of the edge of the asphalt because every time you come in and out, you're, you're breaking free some of that surface. This is looking the other direction, looking south, showing the remainder of the frontage. I want to mention that this is in the tsunami run-up zone. Much of the north spit is. In the, on the left side of the slide, you can see areas that are higher elevation outside of the anticipated run-up. The red is the parcel boundaries. As, as such, there are policies within the Humboldt Bay Area Plan that were introduced during amendments as part of the Samoa Town Master Plan that require new development be designed in a way that it complies with safety requirements so that they're insured for the occupants will be not in danger during a tsunami event. That is something that's applied to new residential development, not to existing residential development, hence we believe you can make the findings for subdivision because you're not introducing new risk. However, as part of the conditions of approval, we've required that they convey residential development rights and further subdivision rights until such time that they address those findings and that may or may not ever occur. This is showing the, the safety of the site. You can see here, the white boundary is the location of the parcel on the far right. There are, there is high elevation or high, high ground, not too far away on the other side of Peninsula Drive and it's fairly accessible. of Peninsula Drive, and it's fairly accessible, but it is through private property. I want to show you the findings. We did a lot of discussion of findings with respect to the last item. In terms of approving an exception, there are specific findings in the subdivision ordinance that are required to be made wherever an exception is granted. I want to be clear that Public Works does not support granting the exception. They believe that not requiring the applicant to do that widening and surfacing of the road along Peninsula Drive places that burden on the county to which the county, because it is a county road, a public road, county is already struggling to meet the burden of existing maintenance, much less widening and improvement. So if, should you feel interested in making the findings for the exception, you want to make sure your motion and reasoning reflects consideration of these. One, that there are special circumstances or conditions affecting the property. Two, and any one of these could be grounds. Two, that the exception's necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right. Three, granting of the exception will not be detrimental to the public or injurious to other property in the area where the project is situated. And then lastly, wherever granting exceptions, there are certain core objectives of the subdivision regulations that need to be tempered with the exception findings, and they include light air, public health, and safety, et cetera. So I'm approaching the end of my presentation. I'm gonna keep it brief. The CEQA findings for the project are similar to the earlier project on the agenda. It's within a community planning area. The density is already on the ground. It won't be a resulting change in density that would require further environmental review. It's largely dividing, it's probably, it's placing an imaginary line where one doesn't exist. So it is a developed parcel, and it qualifies for use of this exemption under CEQA, and none of the exceptions to the exemption are applicable. So with that, the recommendation is approval for the reasons I just articulated, and you always have the right to go in a different direction. Our approval is recommending that they apply the full conditions as recommended by Public Works. However, if should you wish to grant the exception request, you'll need to make those findings in your motion, and you can always deny the project or require further environmental review should you feel that that's necessary. So this is the suggested motion, and with that, I'll end my presentation. I'll be open for questions, and I believe the applicant is prepared to make a case for the exception.
Thanks. Before I invite the applicant to begin our public comment, are there questions for Mr. Lazar from the commission?
I guess I would like Mr. Lazar to respond specifically after we hear the rationale for the exception request, to hear the rationale that supports denying the exception request, but we can wait till after.
Okay. Any other questions at this point on the staff report?
No questions. I just wanted to disclose that I did drive by.
Roger. Thank you, and I also wanted to make an ex parte disclosure, although I did not drive by recently. I have driven up that road a number of times in the past, and earlier this week, I had a conversation with the applicant, Mr. Fennel, and got to hear his explanation of why he seeks the exception request. Commissioner West?
Similar to Commissioner Levy, I too have, I did not drive by for this particular instance, but I've been on the road many times and have parked in that area, and I'm very familiar with it.
Great. Okay, and with that, then we will open public comment, and I, as always, will invite the applicant to make an initial presentation. I'd appreciate it if you could limit it to 10 minutes. You will have an opportunity, if necessary, to respond at the end to any other public comment.
Great, I think it'll be quicker than that. This presentation consists of no gunfire or weed. So thank you, Chair and Commissioners. This lot split doesn't include any new construction or development. There are already two residences on site, the main house built in 1987, and a second smaller unit, a permitted accessory dwelling unit built in 1994. Improvements included a paved access driveway on the north side of the parcel and a gravel parking lane approximately 170 feet, both in good condition today, and the ADU is accessed on the south edge of the property through Taylor Court. Public Works engineers have recommended three frontage improvements, pave Taylor Court for 50 feet, pave the north access for 50 feet, and construct the paved parking lane along Peninsula Drive for about 170 feet. On number one, we agree to repairing and improving Taylor Court, even though a good part of it is not on our property. It's county land, and the county has let the top of that road get degraded over the last 30-something years. But we will absorb that cost, and it will be well-spent because it will improve the safety of that road. That's a terrible, I've been trying to get the county to fix that for years, and it's like a no-man's-land. We don't, we don't go that far in their repairs. And that will be at least $12,000 on our part. The north driveway is already paved for about 40 feet, probably the standard in 1987. We ask to leave it at 40 feet, as we see no real benefit in adding an extra 10 feet down that driveway and just $3,000 in extra costs. So we're requesting a waiver on lengthening that last 10 feet. The third request, to pave the entire frontage of Peninsula Drive for parking, in my opinion, is unnecessary and potentially exasperating a drainage problem down the road, which floods in heavy rains, even though we haven't had many in the last couple of years. That becomes inaccessible for schoolkids or anyone else walking down that road, and my opinion is if we add another 17 or 1800 square feet of asphalt, it will just be more water collecting where the county has been unable to solve the drainage issue down the And that, I would disagree with Steve on just one thing. That parking lane was gravelled back in 1987 when I built the property, and now, you know, there's some sand on top of it and stuff, but if you were to put a shovel and try to break it, there's gravel underneath that little layer of sand. So it was improved, and I don't think it's in poor condition right now. There has been zero deterioration of the road next to that, where the pavement changes from gravel to asphalt. So, you know, if it was in bad shape, I'd say, you know, either have us gravel it or pave it, but it's not in bad condition. And the reason for this lot split is our desire to sell the main house to the 21-year tenants who raised their family there and asked us last year if we would ever sell. I knew that they couldn't afford both houses, so I decided to split the lot and to be able to sell them the house they've lived in at a reasonable price. These paving, these extra paving costs would make that very difficult. We're also asking for a waiver of the drainage report. I read in the staff report this week that that's required, even though there is no new development and stuff, so I would respectfully ask for a waiver on that, and I asked the planner to ask Bob Bronckel, and Bronckel said that can happen if it's appropriate, so it's not unheard of. So to sum up, we believe that the requirements for the exceptions are met. The lot split contains no new development. The estimates for the extra paving would be an unnecessary burden on us while providing little or no benefit to the public, and I believe these exceptions will not be detrimental to the public in any, in any manner or shape. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions at this time for the applicant? We can always call you up afterwards if we need you, but-
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If not, then I would open up additional public comment, beginning with those in the room. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jennifer Savage, and I have lived at the property under consideration for 21 years, and I've been imagining what it would be like to buy our home for a long time now. Sorry. But only in the past few years has this idea become something that we could take on financially, and I'm just really excited to have this opportunity and grateful that Michael and Sharon have been willing to put themselves through this subdividing process for the sole purpose of selling us the home. So I'm here tonight to ask that you approve the exemption request and the subdivision permit, and I wanted to thank staff, you know, for the really thorough report and the assistance in helping me personally understand the condition about paving the shoulder of Peninsula Drive. I do get that this is a typical sort of ask when properties are subdivided, but in this case, the Fennels are seeking to subdivide simply so that my husband and I can buy this home that we love, and as noted in the staff report, no new development would result from the proposed subdivision. No changes or harm to the local environment are proposed. In fact, I mean, there's no tangible changes to the property at all, and the part of Peninsula Drive in question hasn't had any issues during the two decades that we have lived there. What serves as a parking area has never been a problem, and it's just that denying it will prevent the completion of this lot split due to the excessive financial burden associated with paving the parking lane. So considering the particular circumstances of this application, the confirmed lack of new development, the lack of impacts to public access and resources, and the functional state of the road, I believe that findings for granting the exemption can be made, and I ask you to approve the exemption and the subdivision permit. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on this item? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Good evening, Chair Levy. I'm, my name is Mario Calson. I live along Peninsula. I'm a neighbor to this property. I can attest to the drainage challenges that we experience every winter, probably 300 feet, 400 feet just north of this property. I'm not a road engineer, but the way that the road angles right there, paving that section of the road seems to me a logical consequence that we would be exacerbating this drainage problem. It also seems to me that it's, it's a little bit disingenuous to require a private property owner to pave within the right-of-way for a parking area. I can understand the apron accessing the county road. There's some safety issues related to that, but the parking area adjacent to Peninsula seems kind of unusual and an overreach potentially. So those are my comments. I support the project, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment who's in the room? Okay, I will just see, I do not see any hands up on Zoom, but let me just ask or phone if there's anyone else wishing to comment on Zoom or phone before, not seeing any, I will, I will close the public comment section, however, reserving the right to ask any direct questions to the applicant if necessary. Thoughts? Commissioner Scavdall?
Yes, so as I said, I did, I did, yes, I did a little bit more than a drive-by. I actually stopped there and walked up and down the roadway. I'm prepared to waive the frontage improvements on Peninsula Drive for the following reasons under special circumstances. It's an existing developed property. There's two homes that have been there for many years. The existing frontage is gravel, shoulder parking. It is in good condition. It comes all the way up to the top edge of the asphalt. There is no erosion of the roadway edge there. It's very compatible with the balance of the neighborhood, which is essentially all the same way. Not even, the county bus stops aren't paved there. They're gravel. And quite frankly, I don't think the county will ever pave the balance of this road shoulder out there, and I never thought I'd say this as an engineer, but there's quite frankly no need to over-pave. That's what I think we'd be doing in this circumstance.
Well said, and from our resident engineer, too. Commissioner Mulder?
Hearing that and seeing the pictures that was in the staff report, it did look like, you know, the gravel got up to the roadway surface elevation, and then also hearing that we could potentially be causing an increased drainage issue, I would be fine with granting everything. So I think-
I just want to clarify, all the comments about the flooding relate to COA number three from Public Works, is that correct? And while you pull it up, I'm just gonna get the rest of what I have to say out. My understanding is that by subdividing these, we will be giving them the right to build accessory dwelling units, but for the fact that they're going to be conveying their development rights until such time as they solve the tsunami risk issue. So I guess I would ask if there, if parts of number two or number one are going to be allowed to not happen, that we potentially put those in with the tsunami improvements, and if they want to do new development, then COAs number one and two, to the extent that we don't require them, be done at that time.
To answer your question, you are correct that it is not a, the conveyance is something that can be retrieved, so it is recoverable, and it, and the subdivision will generate additional development potential theoretically, but not until those obstacles are overcome. With respect to the Public Works Condition Three, I just want to make sure I've got it here. Looks like that is correct. That's the section on drainage, which 3.2 is the requirement for the drainage report. 3.1, the applicant's responsibility to correct any involved drainage problems. And it's, so far, the public comments I've received prior to the meeting and discussing it with Ms. Savage and the applicant suggest that the drainage issues were on neighboring lands to the north, not on the subject parcel. That's just what we've gathered from, from our discussions with the public.
And can you just speak to why it's staff's opinion that we should deny those requests, please?
So I'll just say that our role is to bring forward the recommendations from other departments.
Well, that, that's very different than saying, we recommend that you deny them. So are, is the department retracting the statement that you recommend that we deny them?
Staff works together, and we are, we stand united.
In, in that case, then can you just speak briefly on why the public testimony does not sway you?
So I, you're, Commissioner Mitchell, if I could respectfully say, you're, you're asking the wrong staff, that question. I, I mean, we may be entirely sympathetic to this, but I think the approach of the Public Works Department is consistently to require these improvements and to ask the commission to decide whether or not to waive them. And that, that is the approach that's taken, and that is the decision that's before you.
Okay, let me ask a different question. I'm undecided on number one and two. Can you tell me what the risks of not requiring one and two would be?
By one and two, you're referring to-
COA, Public Works COA, number one and two.
So by one and two, I'm sorry, there's, I mean, there's many ones-
Yeah, there's a whole section.
There's one, one, one-two, one-three.
Okay, so for all the ones that don't have to do with the paving the shoulder and the drainage?
So specifically, then, you're talking about, well, I, I see that as being 2.4 access roads, where it requires access roads serving the subdivision shall be constructed to the satisfaction of this department as follows, that being Public Works. That's Peninsula Drive. That's the intersection of the access roads. That's then Taylor Court and unnamed access road.
Yes, and I'm wondering-
So, so I think the thing that, it, I'm not necessarily advocating this in light of what I just said, but along Peninsula Drive, I think the thing that Commissioner Scavdall clearly articulated was that you would end up with an improvement there that would be a lone improvement along a street, and so the rest of the street will probably never receive the same degree of treatment. So is it really a necessary improvement to have these two lots to have that amount of improvement? That's the question that's, the commission's being asked to weigh. And in light of that, Commissioner Scavdall, I also will point out, and I think this is in the staff report, is that that's already gravelled. It's compacted gravel. It's capable of supporting the weight of a vehicle. It already is suitable for parking. So the question becomes, what's the need for placing asphalt over the top of that? So the question becomes, what's the need for placing asphalt over the top of that? If we could go down to the Taylor Court and unnamed access roads improvements, I believe that on one of those, the agreement, the applicant agrees to make the improvements for safety reasons. But he, he is presenting that on the other, rather than construct it to a minimum width of 50 feet, it's already at 40 feet. 40 feet is two 20-foot travel lanes with parking over on the shoulder off the pavement. So the question that the commission's being asked to consider, is it necessary to put that additional 10 feet of paving in when the road already has two 20-foot travel lanes?
Yeah. I think it was?
Okay, I had that just backwards, sorry.
40 feet of length already paved when?
Right.
When Public Works by default was asking for 50 feet of length to be paved, yeah?
Yep.
Okay.
The driveways need to be paved. So I wasn't proposing that, that we not pave the driveways, just want to be clear. And the county standard's 50 feet, so I'm not proposing we change that.
Commissioner Mulder.
So I heard in the applicant's testimony that, I don't, I don't know if it was the unnamed access road or Taylor Court, one of them was already paved 40 feet in length, which was the standard in 1980-something or rather. For me personally, being as they're giving up or conveying their developmental rights, I would be okay with accepting that 40-foot distance because the pictures that was shown in the staff report looked like that was in good condition. And basically, my understanding of the apron is to protect the county's asset as far as the roadway and to keep dirt and rocks from traveling into the roadway, which degrade the asphalt. That's my understanding. I could be wrong. So I'd be fine with waiving 2.4A in the, in, that's, I'm talking in this Public Works part on page four, like waiving that requirement of 2.4A and then amending 2.4C to clarify. I, I'm sorry, I'm mixing up which street is which, but the one that needs to be paved completely, that, that'll be 50 feet. But then agreeing with the applicant's rationale that the other roadway was already paved 40 feet, which was the requirement when that was developed. And I would make that a motion if that's acceptable.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Commissioner Landry. Yeah.
So in one of the parts where it's already paved 50 feet, I mean, it's already paved 40 feet and the county is requiring another 10 feet, is that the 10 feet of paving that our testimony is saying that would exacerbate? Okay. Yeah, clarify it, please.
Thanks, through the chair. To your question, no, that, that, the exacerbation would be the paving of the parking lane along Peninsula Drive, not the, the lengthening of the interior private drive. I think this might provide some consolation. Keep in mind that the conveyance of the residential development rights does not eliminate further discretionary permitting from the equation. If they ever were to retrieve those development rights, there would be a coastal permit at play. And a condition of Public Works on that coastal permit would likely be paving the road, whatever portion hasn't been already paved. And they could always bring it to you to sort that out. But there will be another bite at the apple, and it won't be developed without another discretionary permit, no matter what. There's no way around that.
Thank you. That's, that's clarifying. Commissioner West?
Did I hear a motion in front of you, Commissioner Mulder?
I attempted to make a motion if it was acceptable by the chair.
So just to be clear, you're making the motion that we approve the project and grant the requested exceptions to specifically the condition, whichever one it is in here, that the condition to pave the parking lane on the edge of Peninsula Drive and the requirement to add an additional 10 feet of paving to the unnamed access road to the north, where it's already paved 40 feet?
Correct.
But noting that they will fulfill the requirement to pave Taylor Court to a full 50 feet as requested?
Correct, and then also noting that if there was any future development, this would, it would become under discretionary review. And at that point in time, with the added impact of potential development, that decision could be made then.
I would second that.
Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Mulder, seconded from Commissioner West. Any additional comments on the motion? Then can we have, well, let's have a roll call vote. Why not? Okay, voice vote this one, why not? Voice vote, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Any abstain? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. Okay, and now, with, that one, that one fast, and this could go even faster. I will now invite a staff report on the third and final public hearing, Ram Ram Bliss to LLC conditional use permit in the Harris area.
Good evening, I'm Portia Sausedo, the assigned planner for Ram Ram Bliss LLC conditional use permit. This is an aerial image of the location of the project. The project is in the Harris area on the northeast side of Bear Creek Road, approximately 1.8 miles due north, as the crow flies, from the intersection of Bear Creek Road and Dinsmore Road. The parcel is 61 acres. The land use designation is residential agricultural for prime and non-prime lands, and it is zone unclassified. The access to the project parcel is by way of Jewett Road and then off of Bliss Lane, which, there is an error in the staff report. It says that Bliss Lane is a county maintained road. It is not. Here is a site plan of the proposed cultivation areas and associated infrastructure in the project parcel. The proposed project is to continue existing commercial cannabis cultivation consisting of 11,762 square feet of outdoor light deprivation and full sun cultivation. There are three cultivation areas on the property, and there are six greenhouses total. One cultivation cycle is proposed annually. Processing is proposed to occur onsite. The total irrigation need is 252,000 gallons per year, which is 21.4 gallons per square foot. The project obtains water from three ponds. The ponds include two lined in-stream ponds that capture water from two unnamed Class III tributaries to Jewett Creek and a third rainwater catchment pond. The applicant has obtained a final stream bed and alteration agreement with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife for the in-stream work needed to nine encroachments. The applicant shall consent to forbear for two diversionary ponds during the period from May 15th to October 31st of each year and establish onsite water storage for retention of wet season flows sufficient to provide adequate irrigation water for the size of the area to be cultivated as a condition of project approval. Water storage consists of a 162,000 gallon pond, a 140,000 gallon pond, a 90,000 gallon pond, and additional tank storage for a total of 605,000 gallons. The applicant must amend the cultivation operations plan as well as the site plan to account for the additional water storage and methods that will be employed for irrigation needs during the forbearance period before cultivation operations can commence. Power is provided by generator and solar power, the generator being exclusively utilized for approximately one hour every three days throughout an 18-week growing season to provide portable pumps' power that are used to feed and to water. The project is conditioned to transfer to all renewable electricity sources by January 1st, 2026, as a condition of project approval. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sausedo, for the very efficient presentation.
You're welcome.
Questions for staff?
Just want to clarify, the project site is in Harris, off Jewett Road. It's not in the Dinsmore area, off of Bear Creek Road.
Oh.
So there's a?
The Harris area?
Yeah, it's not, this project's not in Dinsmore, off of Bear Creek Road.
Yeah, it's, it says Harris on the agenda.
Yeah, it's in Harris, it's off of Jewett Road.
Right.
The location maps and the, and the rest of the documents are all accurate. There's just, the top of page two on the staff report.
Got it, yes.
Okay.
You're quite right, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Sure. So in light of the fact that there, there was spotted owl habitat, and there's such limited electricity needs, was there any consideration given to just asking them to go to solar immediately or sooner?
If I could, through the chair, the, it's, the project is conditioned to meet the requirement to move to all renewable energy by the date in January 2026, January 1st. So no, there wasn't that involved.
And I believe I read in the staff report or in somewhere that the generator is only used for one hour every three days for the purposes of filling some tanks?
Correct, and it has the secondary containment with the decibel level of?
Yeah.
50 from 100 feet from the parcel boundary?
So even though that, it's good that they're consistent with other ones that we've required going to be fully renewable by 2026, it sounds like their use of generators is very limited for this project?
Correct.
Other thoughts? Any other question? Oh, I'm sorry, I need to have public comment. My, so yes, with that, I will open public comment and invite the applicant or the applicant's agent, if they are here or on Zoom, to present first. Does staff know if they are here? Do you see anyone representing the applicant here? Ed Dentson is the agent, yeah. I don't see him. Okay. If not the applicant, then I would invite anyone else in the public, either in the room or on Zoom, who wishes to comment, to raise your hand or come up to the podium, please. Seeing no hands in the room and no hands on Zoom, I will assume there is no need for public comment, and I will close that section of the hearing and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Mulder? Oh, you look like you were about to speak.
Would there be any willingness to giving them the option to, instead of constructing a generator shed to just get rid of it in a year or two, giving them the option to just pay for the solar, a couple of solar panels for that limited amount of power?
The way I believe I read it is they already have a generator shed with secondary containment, so I could be wrong.
And that'll continue to be used for emergency backup power, I'm assuming?
Okay, never mind.
I'd be ready to, being as we received zero negative public comment, being as we received zero neighborhood complaints, and being as we received, like, no negative anything against this, as far as I read it, I would make a motion to adopt the Resolution 23-1265, Attachment 1, which says the following, finds that the Planning Commission has considered the mitigative negative declaration for the Commercial Medical Marijuana Land Use Ordinance and the Denim that was prepared for the Ram Ram Bliss 2 LLC project, and finds that the proposed project complies with general plan and zoning ordinance and approves the conditional use permit subject to the recommended conditions of approval. And approve the project, because the rest of what I'm following to read is? I'll second that.
Okay, and yeah, it's cut off there in the agenda, but essentially, motion to approve by Commissioner Mulder, seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. Any additional comments on the motion? Yeah, I'll just say that I think this is a solid project that probably could have been on consent, from what I could tell. So I guess I will call for a voice vote on this one. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Any abstain? Motion passes unanimously. Project is approved with the recommended conditions. Okay, thanks, guys. And then, I, I want to note that we do have a pulled item from consent that Commissioner Scavdall had a quick question about.
Thank you. Upon further review, I found the answer to my question. Prepared to make a motion to approve the Marshall Ranch Ag Reserve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Scavdall, seconded by Commissioner Mitchell, to approve the Marshall Ranch Agricultural Reserve and Land Conservation Contract and Notice of Merger. All in favor, let's just have a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, and that is now taken care of and passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So we can now finally come, and I really do appreciate the patience of the audience who've stayed for the workshop. I apologize that we could not get through the other stuff quicker. I have, however, found out from the director that the security guards out front are willing to keep the doors open, the building open until 10:00. Staff is able to stay until 10:00. Does the commission have any objection to keeping this going until about 10:00?
It's very exciting for those of us that commute 60-plus minutes, but I'll be here.
Aye, with special apologies to Commissioner Mulder, who drives a lot farther than anyone else to get here, at least up here. Okay, so with that said, let's, let's move into the, yes, Commissioner Mulder?
At this point in time, would we make ex parte disclosures if we attended any of the public hearings leading up to this?
You could. This is not actually the public hearing.
Oh, this is just a workshop, so?
This is a workshop.
So technically, wait till the public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too. But good question. Okay, so with that, I believe Mr. Hilton is prepared to make a presentation on the most recent iteration of the ordinance. And so, please go ahead, sir.
Good evening. We're figuring out the screen share situation. Okay, good evening.
If we could have the screen share now.
Okay, I think we have the, perfect, thank you. So good evening, I'm Keenan Hilton, Associate Planner in the Long Range Division and the assigned planner for the Short Term Rental Ordinance. Director Ford and I have been working on this project now for a couple months. Our goals for this evening are to share a little bit of information on the background information, foundational information for the ordinance, to share the text itself, and then to accept questions and comments and direction from the commission. I'm going to start by doing an introduction that's based on the values behind the ordinance. As I said, Um, as I said, some of the data to be able to visualize and, and that supports the approach that we're taking, summary of our process of public outreach. Uh, then, I propose that we go through the text of the ordinance, and I'll try to go through efficiently, uh, but without comment and question at that point, and then come back around to do questions and comments by section, um, at the end, if that's acceptable. And then, of course, uh, public input, if that is the desire of the commission.
I think, uh, I'd like to give the public the opportunity to ask their, you know, make a public comment, two minutes apiece, and in keeping with everybody else.
Great.
You know, just, just because they've been waiting a long time, they're here, and I'm hoping that that will still allow some opportunity for discussion at the end.
Okay. Uh, so swapping the public input and planning commission comment?
I, i- if you're okay with that, that's what I just discussed with the director.
Okay.
Thanks.
So I guess I, yes, like to start the meetings by saying the next step in the process, if we are able to, uh, get it on that October 5th agenda, uh, that is our, that is our target for the hearing. Okay, so the, the values behind this ordinance, uh, you know, this, of course, is the reason why we have public policy is, is to protect public values. Uh, there are a couple different ones at play in the short-term rental ordinance, in particular, um, these three. Prevent the loss of housing stock. This is taking residences that previously people, or I guess shouldn't say in all cases previously people used, because sometimes it's vacation homes, sometimes it's second homes, et cetera. But, um, but in some cases, taking things, houses that were part of the housing stock and converting them to another use. It, the other value is preserving neighborhood quality. Uh, these have some impacts on the neighbors, um, and trying to come up with a set of standards that can address those in a meaningful way. And then lastly, allowing economic gain for residences. There are hundreds of members of our community that are involved in this industry and have invested a lot in it. And so, um, we have heard from members of the community that are concerned about all three of these areas. The data that we've looked at, um, the short-term rental data was, was gotten from host compliance, which is a service that actually the treasure tax collector is in contract with, and they keep track of all of the short-term rentals within the unincorporated area of the county. And so, um, and so, yeah, that, that was, that was our source of data for SDRs that I'm gonna show you shortly. Uh, the housing information was from 2020 census data, so that is, uh, a little bit old at this point, but that's the source that we have in GIS. And then Department of Finance, that is current. And then, the rental data is from the American Community Survey, that is from the, uh, that's done by the Census Bureau. And then I have one bit of information from our housing element. Okay, now how do I do this? No, what I wanna... Yes. Sorry. I wanna go to the file explorer. Okay. Yes. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. This is a different system than was here, when I was giving most of my presentations to the planning commission.
And the third one? I said, preserving.
That one there? Okay, fabulous. Oh, that's not zooming in at all. One more time? Oh, yeah. Okay. Bigger? Okay. So... So in Humbert, Humboldt County overall, we have a total of thirty-four thousand ninety-three residential units.
Sir, could you make that bigger again, like you had it for a minute?
Oh, sorry.
It went back to its original.
Thank you.
Scale.
And I, I apologize for these technical issues.
Thank you.
Okay, so, in unincorporated Humboldt County, we have thirty-four thousand ninety-three residential units, of which, um, in the ballpark of twenty-six to twenty-seven thousand are single-family residential, uh, the balance being some version of multifamily. The number of short-term rentals, uh, within the county, and that is, we'll get to the definitions, but short-term rental is the entire dwelling unit, um, is that it's, there's five hundred sixty-seven. And this number, it is with the caveat, um, that it's gleaned from this one data source. There are, there are other pieces of information that I've seen, other sites that glean data from these sites, like AirDNA. I think you get a slightly different figure, but based on the data we got from host compliance, this is a number that we feel solid about, and it gives a, if it's not exactly correct, I think it gives a very good idea of the trends within the county. So, five hundred sixty-seven, that constitutes one point six-six percent of the total housing stock of the county. Within the coastal zone, there are seven thousand seven hundred forty-three units and two hundred twenty-five short-term rentals. That com- comprises two point nine percent of the total housing stock within the coastal zone. And you can see here that it varies quite a bit, uh, by area. So the Trinidad area plan has six point nine seven percent of the housing stock, uh, whereas, you know, the South Coast area plan, that's the area roughly between, uh, Ferndale and Shelter Cove along the coast, doesn't have, doesn't have any. And then Shelter Cove Coastal Resort Improvement District, uh, it's a pretty high figure there, eleven point eight six percent. Also included data, um, having to do with the vacancy rates. And this, this is from the census in 2020. And we believe that this would include those residences that are used as short-term rentals. They would be included in this vacancy figure. So you see, um, quite high vacancies in North Coast and Trinidad area plan, uh, a fairly low vacancy in McKinleville. And again, we do believe that this includes short-term rentals within that. Um, and then, in Humboldt Bay area, Eel River slightly higher, and then very high vacancy rates in South, and South Coast and Shelter Cove. And then moving on to the inland community area plans, so in the inland area, there are twenty-one thousand sixty-two housing units and three hundred one approximately short-term rentals, which is about one and a half percent of the housing stock in the inland area. And again, you see that it's not distributed evenly among the different areas, and we're looking here at just the community plan areas, but in Oric, uh, for instance, it's about six and a half percent of the housing stock, and Trinidad West Haven, uh, about eight point three. And then, lower in some of the other areas, including, you know, Hydesville, Rio Del, Avenue of the Giants, Garberville, Redway, Bembo, Alderpoint. And then, the, oh, yeah, and that was just the areas within community plan areas. And then all of those inland areas that are outside of community plan areas, um, it's about point seven eight percent of housing stock. Okay. Now can I switch out of this? Maybe not this one. Shoot. Sorry, sorry for these technical problems. Okay. Okay, and then, since I'm back on the slide, I have, I have something else to show, but I'll, I'll show it to you once, we, once we turn to the ordinance itself. To summarize the public meetings that we've done, we've had five community meetings, two of which have been on Zoom, um, the attendance has been upwards of four hundred people. Uh, that's not necessarily four hundred unique individuals, I think there were some, uh, repeat attendees, but, um, but, you know, a lot of involvement in the meetings. We've received at this point upwards of a hundred written comments, uh, many of which I know you received in a packet yesterday. And then, our webpage has received over three thousand visits. We've been pleased with the public outreach, it's been incredibly valuable, uh, to hear from folks. Something to note about the public outreach is that, um, uh, with the exception up, before this week, I would shoot from the hip and say that maybe ninety percent of the folks that we heard from were Airbnb operators, um, limited representation of other points of view. Within the last week, we've received a lot of letters, uh, from, from neighbors, from people concerned about housing within the community, um, that, who are, of course, also stakeholders in this issue. Some of the points that have been raised over and over again, um, at the meetings that, that we've had, have been alternative owner builder. There are a lot of folks, uh, in the, in the county that have our alternative owner builder houses, and, um, I'll get to the section in the code where we discuss, uh, why it's not an allowance to do short-term rental in our alternative owner builder, but creating a pathway, um, is, there's been a strong desire for that. Another comment that we've received a lot, uh, has to do with giving deference to existing operations in this updated draft that was included in your packet. There, there is a section that, that creates a, it, it gives deference to existing operations. One of the very frequent topics that was hit on was the difference between urban and rural settings for short-term rentals, both in terms of the impacts on housing and also the potential neighborhood impacts. I'm just being slightly different. And, fourth, we have heard repeated comments about concern about housing stock and the impact that short-term rental has on converting the use. And, and then, uh, I guess just worth noting is that we, we have received a lot of comments about just amending and deleting different standards. This is largely, uh, it, the, it's too numerous to try to summarize to you, uh, on one slide, but it's, that's been a lot of im- input. And then lastly, having differentiation between home share and short-term rental. So home share, as we'll see in the discussion of the ordinance, is when you are renting one or two bedrooms, uh, in your house that you live in permanently. Uh, whereas, short-term rental, as we use it in the ordinance, is when you've, the entire unit is being used, uh, for the use of short-term rental. Okay. I think at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to, or switch over to reviewing the ordinance text itself. So I'll stop the share once more and open up.
And Mr. Hilton, uh, if you could particularly, and maybe you're gonna do this, um, call out for us the, the places where you've made recent changes. I, I know there've been several iterations, but, um, but it would be great to, to, there, there's some significant changes to the most recent draft, so maybe just calling that out in case people were used to an earlier version.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Mulder?
The underlined is proposed additions, correct, the way I read it?
Yeah, but that's, it's all underlined because it's all new. Um, I, I meant, it just would be helpful for people who've been following this through several iterations to see what's changed since the last draft. Thanks.
Could we also make sure to get that data file that you showed us and your presentation sent to us, please?
Yes, that would be great.
Sure.
That was very informative.
Perfect. I want, um, uh, I want this one first. Okay. Oh. Dang. Sorry for the technical difficulties. New share. Okay. Uh, this was something that I wanted to highlight with the data section. Uh, just when I, when I was looking at the, this was the, um, the American Community data from the Census Bureau, just as we're thinking about the potential impacts on housing, uh, this was a striking figure, uh, that, within Humboldt County, and this is within Humboldt County, it should be noted, including the incorporated areas. Uh, the share of renters that, that do pay thirty-five percent or more of their income on rent is about forty-seven percent. And, and then also, I thought it was worth noting that, um, in our housing element, um, or, we, we cite the RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, from the California Department of Housing and Community Development, and they tell us how many units are appropriate to develop, uh, within, uh, within the next ten-year frame, and, oh, within eight years. Thanks. And, uh, and just highlighting that, you know, when they're discussing the housing needs of the county over the next eight years, that they, that they do divvy it up between these different categories, extremely low, very low, low, moderate, above moderate. And I guess I wanted to highlight that above moderate, you know, this is an important part of housing stock. In fact, forty-two percent of what Humboldt County was assigned was, um, above moderate. So, and, and that, um, when conceiving of how the production of above moderate income housing interfaces with folks that are at a lower income level, that it's like, if we don't produce the above moderate housing, people with above moderate incomes probably just end up living in moderate income housing. So it ends up pushing people, uh, the, the people that feel the impact of it most are the people with the lowest incomes. So it's just making the connection between, uh, maybe nicer housing that you might not intuitively associate with, uh, meeting all of the needs of, uh, the county, and the fact that it is, it is all one system. So, and then how do I switch to? Yeah, I wanna go to the ordinance. Okay, awesome. And with that... Okay, thanks. Is that too big? Too big? And with that, the ordinance. So, the purpose of the ordinance, uh, consistent with the slide that I had earlier, protect and promote public health, safety, welfare, support tourism and economic development, protect housing stock, preserve quality of neighborhoods and balance the needs of property owners, tenants, and neighbors. The applicability of this ordinance, it applies when dwelling units are used as short-term rentals. It is allowed on all parcels and in all zones where residential use is a permitted use. The application, we The application, we imagine, for this type of use, in addition to the basic components of a site plan, fee, et cetera, would be a grant deed to establish the ownership, an affidavit that you've delivered the Good Neighbor Guide, which we'll discuss what the contents of the Good Neighbor Guide are in a moment, and evidence of property owner consent if the permit holder is someone other than the property owner, and then the hall route if you're seeking a special permit, and we'll get into the details on why that is appropriate in a minute. Existing operations, and this is one that I want to definitely put a flag in because this has not been in previous versions of the ordinance. This is a new addition that is directly in response to the many, many comments that we got asking for a provision such as this. And I want to take a moment with, with this section. So, no permits for whole dwelling unit short-term rentals shall be issued during the first two months following the effective date of this section. But, applications from individuals operating existing short-term rentals will be received. So, we'll only receive those from people that fit into that category of existing short-term rental operator. Two months after the effective date of the ordinance, the department will issue permits for qualifying locations with existing short-term rentals. An existing short-term rental shall be determined based on evidence of operation prior to the effective date of this ordinance. So, in this section, we're saying that if it existed prior to the effective date, which, let's say theoretically, optimistically, that's in December of this year, that if, that if you established your operation in November, you would be considered an existing operation, as it's written right now. If the number of permits issued for existing short-term rentals exceeds the cap, which we'll get to what the cap is, it's 2% of housing stock for the designated area, then no permits will be issued for new short-term rentals until the number of permitted short-term rentals in the county falls below the cap. So, if through attrition, the number drops down below the cap, at that point, we would accept new applications. That is, if the number of existing exceeds the cap. So, I know this is somewhat confusing, but one of the, one of the details that I do want to draw your attention to is the fact that, A, it's creating an allowance for pre-existing operations to exceed the cap, and B, the definition of an existing operation is established by the effective date of the ordinance. And the reason that it's written that way is because essentially, we talked with county council about what we would, what would be, we would be able to do. And there are different examples of what different jurisdictions have done in terms of setting a year or a time, say, in relation to a moratorium. But, but county council advised us that the cleanest way to write it in our circumstance was the effective date of the ordinance. So, it's a, it's a policy decision that, you know, I think is worthy of discussion, but that is, that's why it's included as the, this version in, in the staff report, or, sorry, in the ordinance right now. So, moving on to permit requirements, we have two, two permit pathways for short-term rentals. One is an administrative permit, and it's also worth pausing here because one of the amendments that we're suggesting that is made is actually an edit to Chapter 2, which is the administrative section of our code, and we are proposing the creation of an administrative permit. That currently, all planning permits are discretionary in, in our code. And so, we wanted to create a pathway, a ministerial pathway over the counter to get a planning permit. This is a niche that we have kind of made a ZCC function as, but if you read the description of a ZCC in the administrative code, it's not a very clean fit. So, we propose to create this, and we think that it has some other, oh, sorry, ZCC stands for zoning clearance certificate. But we think that this, that this fills a niche and actually could have other applications beyond short-term rentals. Okay, that is an aside. We, we do hope that many short-term rentals, if not most, would fit into the category of administrative permit, which would allow for timely processing of these, you know, perhaps only a day or two, and also a low cost associated with it. Special permit, this would be in the event that someone is applying for an exception to one of the standards, which we'll get into. Required findings for any special permit, so if you're seeking an exception to any of the standards that are outlined in the ordinance, we would need to find that it does not have a significant adverse impact on health, safety, and welfare, and that it would not result in a significant adverse impact on the quality of the neighborhood. In the event that there is a special permit hearing, we would do special noticing to owners and occupants on a shared private road system, if that was the access. Okay. Permit term for short-term rentals. The ordinance proposes that all permits would lapse after a period of two years, but the renewal process would be as simple as submitting a statement of continued operation and there being no violations open on the, for the permit at the time. Violations. So, continuous use of a short-term rental without resolution of violations could result in code enforcement action, it could revert, result in permit suspension, it could result in permit revocation. Want to call your attention to the permit suspension because this is another administrative action, or, yeah, potential action, that currently is not in the code, but that we are proposing to add. And that is that if there are, you know, clear violations of the code or a permit, it gives the director the discretion to suspend a permit until those are addressed. And then, now it's getting into the two different categories of short-term rental that we discussed. The first is home share. So, this is the circumstance where an individual lives in the house on a permanent basis, the owner or a caretaker lives in the house on a permanent basis, and one or several bedrooms are rented out in that house. A reason why we created this differentiation for this type of short-term rental, the home share, is because, A, it's not an impact on housing stock, someone is continuing to live there full-time, and B, the person who is closest to the, to the guests and all potential impacts that could come from having guests on a temporary basis is the caretaker. They will be there the whole time. So, it addresses both concerns associated with housing and also associated with potential neighborhood quality impacts. There are still standards that need to be met. And so, the first is building fire and health, so the dwelling shall be permitted or legal non-conforming. In this case, legal non-conforming would be, it was built before the building code was in effect, which I believe is 1962. And then, basic requirements having to do with fire extinguisher, carbon monoxide, et cetera. Solid waste, recycling, compost, you're having a plan for regularly dealing with your solid waste. Access, access road shall be built to a category three standard. So, category three is 16 feet, and, so that's two lanes, and, and then maximum occupancy of two per bedroom plus one. And that's like, if there's a couch or something, someone can sleep on the couch.
You might just mention that the category three road standard was something was recently changed as well.
Yes. Thank you for calling attention to that, Director Ford. It has read category four. There has been, I, I could have included that, actually, on my list of things that we received a lot of comment on, but there was a, there was a lot of pushback to having category three as the standard. Now, two, two things I want to make a note of here. First is that you'll see that it says exceptions to standard C and D may be sought with a special permit. So, A and B, those are ones that are going to be expected of all applicants for short-term rental. C and D, the access and the maximum overnight occupancy, you can make a case for why you want an exception to that, and you need to establish, of course, the two required findings that you meet health, safety, welfare, and that it's not going to have a significant adverse impact on the neighborhood. I also do want to call attention, at this point in the ordinance, in previous versions, we had had a requirement for septic and water. And it was after having discussions in Southern Humboldt and having discussions between us and with DHHS staff, that we came to a point of, of questioning whether it was appropriate to have that standard included. The reason being that if there is someone living in a long-term rental, we don't have such a standard. And so, that's, and, and so perhaps this is a policy issue that there's an appetite to address, but the conclusion that we reached was that perhaps this wouldn't be, this is a narrow application of, of that potential. Do you want to say something?
Yeah, if I could just add, one of the lines of thought there, too, was that if we're dealing with a permitted residence, it's already permitted, that's a standard up above, that it should follow that the septic and the, the well are, are also permitted. Normally, they are. There'll always be exceptions to that, but we're also trying to make this a fairly simple process. And if we got into a situation where we were referring it out to other agencies, it would not be a very simple process.
And it might interrupt the, the concept of the administrative permit that could be issued over the counter. Though I do note that Director Carlson is here tonight and potentially wants to share some thoughts on those concerns having to do with water and septic. Next, so those were, those were the requirements having to do with health and safety. The second category of standards that we have address neighborhood quality and public nuisance. And similarly here, we define that standard C, an exception to standard C may be sought with a special permit. So, the first requirement, this is non-negotiable for a home share, is a resident caretaker shall reside within the dwelling unit and be present when the rooms are occupied by guests. Noise, maximum noise, noise levels are allowed 65 decibels during the daytime, 60 decibels during the nighttime. This was pulled from our general plan. And then, the one that, an exception can be sought, but this is the standard if you want administrative permit. Short-term rental shall provide one off-street parking space per rented bedroom where legal on-street parking is available. One on-street parking space may count towards the minimum. And so, those are, those are the standards for the caretaker, or for the, the home share, home share, period. Now, moving on to short-term rental, which is the section that applies to rental of whole dwelling units for periods shorter than 30 days. Start with some of the prohibitions. These are not allowed. First, recorded limitation, if there's been a covenant agreement, deed restriction, et cetera, to which the county is a party. For example, if it's an affordable housing unit and part of the, there's a recorded document saying, yes, this is going to be dedicated to that use, then it won't, that, you know, you can't use that as a short-term rental.
Keenan, I'm looking at the clock, and I'm going to ask you to just focus on what the ordinance says, get through it so we can get public comment.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Thanks.
SB 9 shall, dwellings on lots approved pursuant to SB 9 shall not be permitted as short-term rentals. That's consistent with state law. Accessory dwelling units, ADUs permitted after 2020, shall not be permitted as short-term rentals. This is consistent with the provisions of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And alternative owner builder, alternative owner builder code says it's for use by the owner. And so, in order to be consistent with that section of code, we have that prohibition. Short-term rental cap, this is total number of short-term rentals, has a limit of 2%. And the area that we have defined as being subject to the cap is, we call it the Greater Humboldt Bay area. It is comprised of several community plan areas. Trinidad West Haven being the northern extent, Rio del Scotia being the southern extent. Short-term rental permits shall not be transferred between property owners. An individual shall not own more than five parcels, or, with short-term rental permits. On resource zone districts, you can only have a farm stay. Definition of a farm stay is that it's education having to do with local agriculture and agriculture is the primary use of the parcel. Getting into the standards, these are largely familiar from the home share, same building and fire, same solid waste, same access with the caveat that if you're on a private access road, you need to be a member in good standing of the Road Maintenance Association. And then, getting into the neighborhood quality and public nuisance. So, this is slightly different than the home share provisions. So, these apply to those parcels within a CPA, community plan area, on parcels that are 10 acres or fewer in size, smaller parcels, and those short-term rentals that are within 1,000 feet of their neighbors. First is a good neighbor guide. So, this is essentially a document that explains what the expectations of the permit, what the standards of the permit are, to be given to your neighbors, so that everyone knows what the expectations are. And it gives a contact information for the caretaker. Lighting, no lighting can spill onto your neighbor's property. One short-term rental per legal parcel. This is at standard C, where we get into the standards that you can seek an exception with a special permit. Neighborhood concentration, the idea here is that on, in general, on parcels that are smaller in size, there is control on how many in one neighborhood can be short-term rentals. So, not exceed 10% of the dwellings on the access road, and the nearest 10 dwellings shall not be short-term rentals. So, this is to avoid having a neighborhood where there are, where there's a concentration of these. You can seek an exception with a special permit. And then, for the larger parcels, the limitation on that is that shall not exceed 20% of the dwellings on the access road. Limitation on the size of gatherings and parties, shall not have more than 20 attendees. Same noise standards as home share, and it's the same parking standard. Something worth noting is that we propose to delete the V combining zone, vacation home rental combining zone, which currently only applies in the inland portion of Shelter And also propose that these would replace the regulations treating bed and breakfast, that a bed and breakfast would be a home share. Couple of the definitions here, we can go over if we need to. Would you like to add anything, Director Ford? Okay. And with that, I will conclude my presentation.
Thank you for that. Thank you for all your work on earlier public meetings. I know there are questions that we would probably like to ask you, but in deference to the folks who've waited a long time, I am now going to allow public comments on this. I regret that we don't have more time than we have. I'm going to have to ask you to limit your comments to two minutes, please. So, starting with those in the room, come on up. Go ahead.
Hi. My name's Lisi. I've been working on a community engagement project for the past year. I've been working on a community engagement project for the past year. It's called the Do Nothing Society. And in the process of that, I've heard a lot of stories from people throughout the community, like more stories than I can honestly process. I've met more people than I have ever met in my life and heard their very vulnerable stories. And there is like, you know, everyone knows there is a monumental housing crisis happening right now. And in New York, they just passed Local Law 18, which makes basically all Airbnbs minus the ones where you can live in the house and rent out a room illegal. Because less than 2% of those, those housing stock, it's like over 3 million units in New York, only like 47,000 were Airbnb's, and that's still destroyed the housing stock. So for having a 2% cap here, you know, it's, I just checked Craigslist, there's only like 300 rentals on Craigslist, checked Airbnb, there's 150 Airbnb rentals right now, today. And so that is, I mean, like, we know that it's basically the Wild West in terms of speculation happening right now. I look and see there's a studio apartment for $16.50. You know, I, my first rental in 2011 in Arcata Downtown, across the street from Wildberries, was $5.50 for a studio, big studio. That place, same place now I saw last year was $1,300. You know, this, there's no, there's no rent control happening right now, there's very little oversight in general, and there are people suffering. There are more people sleeping in cars than we are aware of. I've met so many people that I didn't expect sleeping in cars are sleeping in cars. Student crisis, sleeping in cars, people leaving the area, they had good jobs, they still can't afford to stay here. You know, this, it's, it hurts me a lot to like hear all these stories and to not feel like there's enough being done. So, thank you for your consideration, and thanks.
Thank you so much. Director Carlson, I apologize, I, you had, we'd love to hear your additional, you know, addition to the staff report.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity. I don't want to step in front of any public that if they want to speak to you, I'll be here for the duration of the evening. So, I do have a couple of thoughts. I really commend this effort to consider regulation of this industry, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you all. And, and this workshop, I think, is a great opportunity to share concerns and things that will impact our community. Housing is essential to public health, and public health is essential to this ordinance, as, as stated in the first line in the first section of this ordinance, protect public health and safety. And there are some concerns that I'm hoping that you'll consider. Essentially, in my mind, there are kind of two, there are some concerns related to rural short-term rentals and then short-term rentals that are connected to CSDs. They've already been mentioned, some of them, water quality and safety. Contaminated drinking water is an issue. Rural areas may rely on private wells or, and septic systems, and that interconnectedness can create problems. The quality of the well water can vary and change over time. Contaminated or inadequately treated well water can lead to waterborne diseases and gastrointestinal illnesses among guests. Inadequate sanitation related to septic systems or insufficient water treatment, again, can lead to waterborne illnesses. We've had dialogue with planning staff, and that was a very fruitful conversation. Recently, we've reached out in our referral process and have been trying to connect. A couple of weeks ago, maybe a week and a half ago, we did connect. And in preparation for that meeting, we, staff was looking at groundwater data available through tools that are created by the State Water Resource Control Board, and they're specific to nitrate concentration and the general water quality of our groundwater. And the preliminary findings show that there's not known areas of high nitrate, which is nice, but I think that's very preliminary. We don't have a lot of data related to that. And water quality can change over time. a comprehensive approach would be to have more data. We don't have that. Common to city and rural rentals are risks associated with using pools and, and hot tubs at short-term rentals. Poor maintenance can lead to microbial growth and skin irritation from chemical imbalances. Now, DEH has a program to inspect public pools, and we regularly find that even these commercial pools have violations related to the model pool code. And in rare occasions, we have to ask them to close their operation down because they don't meet minimum standards. So it's important to mitigate these public threats, public health threats. Hosts and property managers should take measures such as regular water quality testing and treatment. They should ensure proper sanitation and sewage systems, and guests should be informed about potential health risks and safety precautions. When you look up short-term rentals on the CDC, the first thing that comes up is concerns related to Legionnaires' disease. Legionnaires' disease is becoming more prominent in our communities and in, in the nation. And we should be cognizant of how that is transmitted. And plumbing related to hot tubs is frequently identified as contributing to that concern. And I think some notification for potential users of these, of this infrastructure is important. Happy to take any questions if anything come up.
I just want to thank you for coming, and I know I and probably lots of us have a number of detailed questions and would benefit from maybe more of a back and forth than this forum provides. So perhaps in groups of two, we could schedule to meet with you and then really get into some of the meat and potatoes of it with you. But we'd really like to reserve the time for the public.
Absolutely, no problem.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, I had forgotten that the director was going to add to the presentation from staff, but I now want to return to public comment. We've had one brave soul stand up to the podium. Are there others in the room? Please, you've waited a long time, but do please try to keep your comments to two minutes.
I got it. I got the pitch timer on.
Thank you.
My name is Heather Cornberg. Hi, thank you for having me, thank you for all your work. I have homes in Shelter Cove and in Bembo. I had a whole thing planned, and you know, it's kind of like listening to a book being read to you. So it sounds a lot different when it comes at our face, right? So it's not as terrifying as we thought. But I do want to note that something that is important on the first page under application, 61.05.4, letter B, I think it would be important to put 10 dwellings or 300 feet up and down the street. I think that when we start measuring stuff in too closely, we're going to run into problems because we have such a difference between the northern county and the southern county. And I do understand the issues with neighborhood quality, and I can honestly say from my experience that I have more issues with renter, not with renters, but with owners across the street who have eight cars going down the road in Shelter Cove than I do with anyone that comes in for a vacation rental. So the standards to our housing are very, very high, especially because we have a third party that's always watching over us, which would be Airbnb or VRBO, and they are also complaint-driven. So we have a big babysitter already that is ready to get rid of us anytime that there's a problem. I didn't understand what vacancy rate meant. When you said that there was a 40% vacancy rate in Shelter Cove, does that mean at one time, or is that permanent? I didn't, I didn't understand what that was, and it's not in the definitions. So the other thing is the, using the effective date versus maybe when we started the process, I think is important because right now people are jamming to get their rentals houses going when they've never done it before. And those of us that have been doing it for a long time have experienced that. And also, we pay a lot of taxes, they go through those third-party sites and directly to the county. So I just wanted to give that a note. Thank you.
Next, please.
Probably just need one second.
And if others who plan to speak could, you know, come up at least a couple at a time, just so we can keep it moving. We do have hands-on Zoom as well, which I'm hoping we can get to. Thank you. You don't need to all come up at once, but I'm just saying, thank you.
Thank you. Examining data is an important part in sound decision-making. My background is in data visualization, so I brought some data that we can examine of how and why. We can understand property owners are incentivized to list their properties as short-term rentals rather than long-term rentals or listing them for sale. As a short overview, the four to largest cities in the coastal area, I want to examine our Arcata with 237 listings, each generating an average of $41,000 a year. Eureka with 277 listings, each one of these generating an average of $43,000 a year. McKinleville with 154, generating $54,000 a year. And Trinidad with 157 listings. Each STR in Trinidad generates an average of $83,000 annually and has an occupancy rate of 74%. So again, it's easy to see why property owners would choose to list their properties as short-term rentals based on this income potential. Trinidad is known as a tourist hotspot, and the area is able to capitalize on this reputation as reflected by the high occupancy rate of 74%. Out of the total of 157 listings, many are suitable for vacationers, including tiny homes and novelty structures. However, the majority are single-family homes, and 96% of the current listings are two- and three-bedroom homes. Active listings have grown 8% over the past year, and while there are fluctuations based on seasonality, it's a sharp trend upwards for new STRs entering the market in Trinidad and no doubt influenced by the factors we've looked at so far. In McKinleville, for example, the average annual revenue for a single Airbnb, again, is $54,000 with an occupancy rate of 64%. 94% of these are entire homes, 64% are two, three, four, and five bedrooms, typical of the single-family homes that are in McKinleville. McKinleville's listings are growing each year greater than the cities we've looked at so far, being, growing 33% in the past year with even less fluctuation in the graph indicating that rentals are being added consistently throughout the year and not necessarily in accordance with tourist season.
Thank you so much. That was...
I'll email you guys the rest.
Yes, please, please do.
But it's fascinating to see how this income-generating potential takes houses away from our community in a time that's so desperately needed. Thank you.
Hello, my name's James Adam Taylor. My friends call me Adam. Just wanted to make a comment. A lot of times, people like to remind you that they pay taxes, and just want to say, when people such as myself, community members, pay significantly less in rent or mortgage, we have a lot more money to spend on things in the community, and I assume that that sales tax goes right back into the city. So I just want to start with that. And then I want to read you a submission. I've also been working on a project about housing the last year. I was given a grant by HCOG, and basically I've talked to a lot of people in the community, been collecting stories. This is one that pretty much brings me to tears every time I read it. This is from a member of our community, person in her 70s, she wished to remain anonymous for specific reasons. But let me read this to you. "I had moved after living in that little house for 20 years. Having a housing choice voucher where they only allowed a certain amount, including utilities, would mean I would have to ask a landlord to lower my rent. Yeah, right. In my 70s and living with disabilities and locked in a situation where HUD was not up to current rents, I was about to become homeless. My thoughts were sad. They were about ending my life. No money for even a room. Waiting lists for senior low-income housing and all low-income housing are years long. And then one has to save up again to be able to afford to move. We need rent control, we need tiny affordable housing, less vacation and other short-term rentals, more building of small rentals on larger lots. All of us could be homeless, even though most of us have a social security pension we've paid into our entire working life." So with five seconds left, I'll leave you there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Brett Rids. I am a renter. I've been renting here for about a decade now, and it's gotten really bad. Like, most people that I know are like dire straits, like don't even have $500 bucks to their name for an emergency, you know? I know somebody just recently got kicked out of her house because some landlord wanted to rent to somebody else that he knew. And I saw the number, like 1.66% of, of housing is short-term rental, whatever Airbnb stuff. And that's 1.66% more people that don't have a home. And that's just, I don't care how small the number seems, like that's, that's that many people on the street. I don't have much else to say than that, other than like, when it comes to like greed, like, that's all it is. It's just greed pushing people out. And eventually, you know, people can only bend so far. So, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, Commissioners, Director Ford. My name is Bernie Garrigan. I'm a real estate broker-owner, South Fork Real Estate, and I'm here tonight on account of the Humboldt Association of Realtors. I came in with a bunch of, excuse me, comments, but we're a little bit tight on time. It was a bunch of accolades to Humboldt County's Building and Planning Department for their approach to this ordinance and how our involvement as a community has been received and implemented right on time. The things that we noticed overall, I guess, as the group of Realtors in the community with the current ordinance, the complaint process specifically seems to lack any sort of guidance or implementation as to what quantifies as a complaint. So maybe some explanation outlining and more clarity for operators and providers. The STR concentration is the primary concern, I think, from everybody within the discussion and seeing the graphic from Keenan. That 10% accessibility or community density per neighborhood seems like it should be more of a community planning area, case-by-case basis for design. So that would be a recommendation we have as well. Our recommendation overall is to delay any sort of adoption of this short-term ordinance until we can totally fulfill with clarity what measures would need to be taken to protect community members and their rights as property owners. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jessie Rockenbach. I just want to thank you for all the work that you've been doing. I saw that there's some very good changes in this draft and wanted to say thank you for all the time and consideration that's gone into it thus far. I just want to address the community concerns about people that want to rent their homes being greedy or somehow trying to prey on an impoverished community. This community is going through an unprecedented economic collapse that I think we're only beginning to see the effects of now, as people have run through their savings from the cannabis collapse and that entire marketplace going away. And I'm personally speaking from experience, I lost my dad about five years ago to cancer, and then I got diagnosed with cancer last year. Went through several surgeries over the winter to try and remedy that. I'm now trying to, you know, live closer to family. We started renting out our home when I was going through the surgery, so I didn't lose my home. And now, we are planning on living out of the county for just a year or two while we spend time with our remaining family members. So I'd just like to say, it's not greed, and it's not always us trying to invest and then make money somehow. We're just trying to cover our mortgage so we can recollect, come back, once we're back on our feet financially, and live in the home that we love. So I really hope that you take into account that some people have already invested into this and just need a little bit of time to figure out what they're doing next. And I think that that's really important for the foundation and backbone of our community to keep our people here. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Andy Dickey, and I'm a longtime resident of Humboldt County and also a short-term rental operator. First, I want to thank Keenan and John. They did a fantastic job redoing this draft over and over again and investing the time to listen to different people and their thoughts. There's one area on the draft that I'd like to see addressed, and that is, there's an area in the draft that says that you can't transfer your permit for your short-term rental. Now, I think that's a great idea as far as that goes, but in my particular case, I put together a trust for a daughter, my young daughter who's a special needs child. And the intention of this short-term rental and the income is, is that when I pass on, that this can continue to grow for her, excuse me, through her with the families running it for her. It could be in her name, she just wouldn't be able to operate it successfully to give her a source of income. So I would like to see that wording changed a little bit so that it could go to your children of some sort, you know? Obviously, we don't want it monetized or sold or anything like that, but I would just ask for that consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tracy Monaport, and I've lived in the county also for over 40 years.
Can you pull that down?
I've had a short-term rental since 2018. And, you know, I really do empathize with the young people today. I have two children, professionals, who make really good incomes, and they're in their 30s and they can't afford to buy houses in their markets, Seattle and Boston. And I don't think the problem here in Humboldt County with less than 2% is really going to fix that problem here in Humboldt County, but I do wonder why someone can, in this ordinance, purchase five separate parcels, say, in the city of Arcata or Eureka or wherever, and use those as short-term rentals. I don't see how that is supporting the housing stock issue. But we're kind of getting all lumped into one. I have a home that we've lived in for 21 years. We have six and a half acres. We started a little part of our own home that we live in. So what's that called again? The house share unit first? And it did very well. I am very social. I love supporting the tourism industry and giving people a really unique stay. We have horses and donkeys and stuff, and people love to stay there, and there's not enough hotels, so we're supporting tourism. We did so well with it, we decided to do a second one, which is our ADU, and it's also on our property about 50 feet or so from where we live inside of our own home. It will never be housing stock, ever. We will not want other people to come and live and then bring their families and their friends and so forth on our property. We love that we're supporting tourism. And that my husband got cancer six years ago and can't work as much as he could, and we're both in our 60s now, and this is our retirement income and how we're going to maintain our home. So we're just hoping that this ordinance isn't lumping everyone into the same bucket. If you're looking for housing stock, please don't let one individual buy five houses in town and make short-term rentals out of them. That doesn't make sense. But people who are living on their own properties and have a couple, and they're not ever going to make those long-term. We have plenty of parking onsite. We're not, just, no one in my neighborhood even knows, right? That we have Airbnb because we get no complaints.
Thank you so much. I don't see anyone else lining up in the room. Oh, you do? Okay, because we have hands up on Zoom and we're not going to have time to get through them all.
Okay, great. I just wanted to address the housing stock. I feel like some of those are scare tactic issues, especially with the HSU, the student population. I just, you know, read recently, there was only 98 students added for the enrollment for HSU and it's projected over 2,000. So all those people in Arcata, you know, have those houses. We're also seeing lower occupancy for people that are coming up here as far as rental goes and looking for long-term rentals. Some of the data Keenan, that you showed up on your first slide, I like object to the occupancy rate on most of those. A lot of the sites we use, we're not seeing anywhere, you know, the whole entire county has about a 40% occupancy rate from what we've seen. So some of those numbers, McKinleville, Arcata, I haven't seen that data. Again, with short-term rentals, they're not rented all year around, so you have the option to do more things than just short-term rental. Getting a permit, it locks you kind of into this scenario where that's the only thing that, you know, you're going to be doing and, you know. Again, with the housing crisis, I think, you know, I feel for a lot of people in that scenario, but I think people need to understand, I just did the math, for an average house in California, not even California, it says $767,000 is in California, but let's just call it $450,000 here. With 5% down, you're, with 7% interest, which is what's right now, your payment would be $3,500, and that's before property tax. So tell me for the people, how could you rent your house out for that much? So what you have is people trying to subsidize their mortgage, and they're coming into the Furnish Finder market, the 30-day-plus market. So please understand, for people who think it's taking money, it's like people are trying to save their properties, and this is what we're running into. It's an economy issue, it's a crisis issue with money. So I just ask that you guys be more supportive with the people who are doing Airbnbs, they're trying to do it the right way. Allow the permitting, you know? Again, I hope that, you know, there's other counties where, cities where they just do a permitting process and they wait to see how many that we get and then come up with a cap. I think the cap's premature. I don't think we should be talking about 2% right now.
Thank you. Okay. No, no, please, please no clapping. We're almost out of time here. I'm going to go now to Zoom, where we have a number of people patiently waiting. Again, I don't think we have time to get through all of them. The first name is Jonna Kitchen. If you could unmute, you have two minutes.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate all the efforts that have gone into the meetings and to the revisions. I guess I'll direct my comments that I'm concerned that a lot of these applications for existing STRs are going to end up in the special permit category. I think the over-the-counter idea is great on paper, but I just think that with the road categories and the concentration restrictions, that it's just not realistic. I manage a number of homes in the greater Trinidad area, and for one, it's almost impossible. I spent a lot of time today trying to figure out where I could find the categories of the roads that a lot of these homes are on, and it's, I couldn't find it. It's honestly difficult, but there's a lot of one-lane roads in the greater Trinidad area and I'm sure throughout the county. I'm not sure why that was put into this ordinance when it's residential use. And there's a few things that for health and safety, just don't make sense to me that, you know, what's okay for a long-term renter or a homeowner isn't okay for a short-term renter. And it even goes with the septic and water issue, why these would, you know? I appreciate these, those things were tossed out of the revisions, but then why is it okay for long-term tenants not to have some of those standards? So some of it just doesn't make sense to me. I'd really like to see the...
15 more seconds.
I'd like to see the road category and special, and the concentration eliminated for now. I support the cap, and I appreciate the effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Caller 6249, you're up next. Go ahead and unmute. What is the unmute button? Yeah, there. Star 6. Yes. They seem to have dropped off. Trevor Goff? Go ahead. You have two minutes.
Yeah, it's open. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, I just, you know, I live in the Jacoby Creek Valley, and, you know, I was really disappointed to see, you know, the septic and water provisions drop off. You know, there's a lot of small parcels on septic, you know, less than half an acre, and that just doesn't, you know? People with short-term rentals, you know, it might be a two-bedroom house, permitted two-bedroom house, it might have a den, you know, a den, a bonus room, et cetera, and then those rooms are being rented out when they're not, you know, technically a bedroom. And so the septic system would not be sized appropriately for that use. Then there's some short-term rentals, you know, putting in additional laundry facilities and other, you know, kitchenettes, et cetera, that, you know, are not necessarily known so that, you know, put the load on the septic system that that's not designed for and, you know, potentially causing, you know, health and safety issues to joining property owners that are also, you know, on well water and also the hydraulic connectivity to Jacoby Creek, which has, you know, several, you know, state and federally listed species, you know, some on it. So I just don't think that should be removed because it's not, it's not as straightforward as, as one would think with a permitted structure. You know, a two-bedroom house, you know, they could be renting out rooms in access to those two bedrooms, putting that additional load on, so. Then also...
15 seconds.
That kind of summarizes my main concern, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to take three more Zoom callers. That's 7420, Chris from Eureka, and then 6331. And that's going to be all we have time for. 7420, if you can unmute, star 6. Caller 7420.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you now. Go ahead. Hello?
The short-term rental ordinance. I like that the requirements for the home share rental are simplified even further. For example, not having to distribute a good neighborhood guide, that they are not subject to a cap, and that they will be able to be permitted immediately after the ordinance is adopted. I think this is really great, the whole home share rental. I still have several concerns and suggestions regarding the short-term rentals, the whole dwelling unit. The first is those located on owner-occupied parcel versus on owner-occupied parcel. I believe unoccupied parcels should receive preference permits over non-owner-occupied parcels. Owner-occupied parcels are much more likely to improve their neighborhood quality and reduce public nuisance. More of the income derived is likely to stay in Humboldt County supporting our local economy rather than the majority of it being exported elsewhere. I believe there will be competition for permits between rentals on non-owner-occupied parcels due to neighborhood concentrations and cap limits. As far as the 2% cap, should existing rentals on owner-occupied parcels be given permits prior to rentals on non-owner-occupied parcels? Or with neighborhood concentration? If they each have an existing rental on parcels within the nearest 10 dwelling units, it implies or exceed 10% street, will they both to apply for a special permit? Will the rental on the owner-occupied parcel receive priority and receive administrative permit? If the cap's reached and there's a waitlist, should parcels on owner-occupied parcels receive them first?
15 seconds.
Yes, we would add an extra permitting permit to prove occupancy. Anyhow, some people may try to fudge, win, find ways to fudge, that you get away with it only on one parcel. And I think it's supposed to preserve the cause...
Thank you very much. I need to end it there. Chris from Eureka, you have two minutes. And then 6331, and that's going to be it. Chris from Eureka? Chris, are you there? Nope. You're unmuted, we can't hear you. I'm going to have to skip you then, I'm sorry. Let's go to 3661. Sorry, 6331. Caller 6331, can we unmute? Star 6?
Yes, I'm unmuted.
Great. I can hear you now, thank you.
Great. Cool, okay. Yeah, I just want some other concerns about impact to rents in the area and also escalation of housing prices in the area. I'd like to kind of think back to when cannabis was first legalized, and we had a run of property that used kind of all over Humboldt, even with properties not really associated with cannabis. And part of that had to do with just the excitement of the industry in the area. So there is the potential for this to cause kind of a, you know, continuation within that market. And I guess I would also like to mention that, you know, we have residential uses on, I think, just every, every property that exists in Humboldt, other than like really heavily industrial uses, are agricultural parcels and are temples. Those all have residential uses a lot. As it's through, there's people for, you know, very rural, very removed parcels to have properties developed on them. Maybe they have roads that aren't quite good enough, and, you know, might be an impact in terms of emergency services getting out there or people who are coming and using those parcels, you know, for a vacation rental, you know, being able to evacuate in the event of a forest. I want to point out that I think large portions of the inland area of Humboldt County do have a high fire risk currently.
15 seconds.
So that's just things to keep in mind in terms of kind of community-wide impact. And I'm just going to ask that you really think about what this is going to look like 10, 15, 20 years down the road. Thanks.
Thanks you so much. Okay, we have just one more hand up, and since we didn't get Chris from Eureka, I'm going to let Marjorie Kieselhorst Eckhart have two minutes, and then that will finish public comment. Go ahead, Marjorie.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I don't think I asked to be on the list, but anyway, I'll speak. We, we've lived in Humboldt County for about 50 years, and part of our, my husband's had a business of his own, and part of our retirement income, because we're both in our 70s and 80s, is from the parcels we've invested in and rented out long-term. And we have, we have rented to students in Arcata and finally have decided that we can't do that anymore because they're very disrespectful for the property and the house. And it's not a matter of greed, it's a matter of energy that needs to be put in to when students or other renters, we've had other renters, you know, not just students, but not be respectful and then have to come in and clean up and, you know, tidy up and cherry out and do different things to make the parcel and the house rentable again. And I feel like it's, again, if you can, you know, it's a two-sided, there's important information on the side of the housing situation in our county as well as in the situation of people that have just done it in the right way, have done, you know, STRs in the right way.
15 seconds.
How they, how it's needed. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, I will now close public comment and thank you all in the room and on Zoom who have participated. I'm sorry we couldn't give more time to the public. Yes, I mean...
Just one quick thing.
Of course.
Can I request that when we consider this item again, that we have a very light agenda around it? I suspect we're going to have a pretty robust set of questions and conversation.
Absolutely. I was just going to turn to the director and ask, what are our options for moving forward with this?
So our plan is to bring this back on October 5th. We have a few items on there. We also have the commission's first opportunity to review draft sign ordinance where we're addressing billboards. Maybe we'll need to roll that back a little bit, but...
I would agree with Commissioner West that there's a lot that I think all of us are going to want to discuss about...
I hear that.
...this. And we're going to need to have public comment again, if it's the public hearing, right? So now, just to...
One of the things I was thinking, because you really didn't get a chance in the workshop to really make comments or explore things. So one of the options would be to continue the workshop to October 5th.
Okay.
And we can put that on first on the agenda. And we can put that on first on the agenda.
And we've had public comment as that, as part of that item.
Correct.
Yes.
So that it could go right into commission kind of questions and discussion.
And then we would have a hearing subsequent to that at a later date?
Correct.
Right. So it would not be a decision date. It would just be a chance to do what we frankly would have liked to do today, is to discuss what we heard, ask questions of staff, et cetera.
Right.
Makes sense to me. Are you all in favor of that?
I strongly feel like we need to have a separate meeting directed solely for this. A separate meeting whenever we're going to attack the sign ordinance, and a separate meeting for regular business. I'm happy to meet extra times, or to have workshops be earlier, like they have historically been done. But it's, it's not fair to have so many people waiting on topics that are completely not germane to what they're interested in. And it's very hard for us to switch gears between all these different topics.
Understand. One of the struggles we have is that we do have, we've got agendas projected out through the end of the year. And, and so we've also got long-range planning items to bring forward as well. Those are just discretionary permits. So-
Extra meeting could be an option if, if others agree to that. Commissioner Mulder?
I would be fine with staying an extra half an hour each time instead of commuting up here a whole nother time.
Yeah.
Think about the carbon footprint.
Unfortunately, we need an extra four hours, not an extra one.
Commissioner O'Neil?
I would, you said you had a lot of comments, too numerous, but if there's some that rise to the top, where there's, you know, a common theme of, you know, 50 people said this, it would be nice to know what, you know, those major issues are that people are asking, one way or the other.
So could I make a motion to continue this workshop to October 5th, noting that public comment has been closed?
Thank you. That is exactly what we need. We have a motion to continue this workshop.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Scavdahl. Can I have a voice vote? All in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Seeing none. That passes unanimously. Yes, Director Ford?
I would just like to make an announcement and thank him for his work on this, because this is going to be Keenan Hilton's last meeting with us.
Oh, really?
He has done a tremendous job on, on this, and just wanted to thank him publicly, and then just also let you know why he won't be here next time.
Keenan, I have attended or watched, I think, all but one of the public meetings on this, and you've done a fabulous job. Thank you so much. Okay, so with that, we are over our time, even our extended time. Is there anything urgently needing to be discussed from the planner or other commissioners? Then let's adjourn this meeting until October 5th. Regular time? I mean, is starting it a little ear- if we're going to have other items on the agenda?
It'd be up to the, the commission, but given the fact that we're not limited, you can continue this to say 5:30. Although recall a-
No, that's too short. That's, I think that's not a change we can make at this point for people, so. Okay, okay. Then let's just adjourn until 6:00 PM on October 5th. Thanks so much, guys.